Thank you, everybody. Could we have a sunshine announcement, please, Cam?
Yes, good evening, Chairman. Today is Tuesday, April 8th, and this is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with the schedule to 5:30 PM start time. And in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Bergen Record, El Espelito, and posted with the city clerk on April 4th of this year. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and made available to the public.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yep. Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez, Commissioner Gangadin, Councilwoman Prinzeiri, Commissioner Torres, and Chairman Langston.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. We have five commissioners present.
Okay, can we swear in the staff, please, Mike?
Let's see, I see Tanya, Matt, Joe, Sophia, Andrew, Eric, and Cam. You guys swear any testimony tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Got more staff than board tonight.
I know.
All right, do we have any correspondence, Cam?
Yes, Chairman. Okay, so we have two items on the agenda that we've received correspondence on. And under new business, item 19, we have a letter from today from the attorney requesting to be carried to May 6th with preservation of notice. So that is item 19, case P2024-0139 for a minor site plan at address 285 Liberty Ave. They've requested to carry with preservation of notice to May 6th. And then the next item on the agenda, the attorney representing the applicant will just make their case to carry.
Okay.
I believe Mr. Lean, if you're here. Yes.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am here on item 20 on the agenda, which is matter case P2024-0185. We're just requesting adjournment to May 6th.
Cameron, okay with May 6th?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna carry P2024-0185 for 9:33 communal ab to a date certain May 6th with preservation of notice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. That's it, Cam?
Yes, and otherwise, the sunshine announcement is B1 in evidence.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's get into old business. Item A is case P2023-0106 is a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances for 119 Merritt Street. For the record, Tom Lean of Connell Foley here on behalf of the applicant. This is a matter that was carried from September 10th of 2024 with testimony taken. I reviewed the transcript and appears that all the commissioners here this evening, we're also there that night, so I don't have to ask if anybody read the transcript. Because we did not continuously carry this, I did renotice and I did post this to the portal. I will provide to Counsel.
Mr. Chairman, I am to receive the affidavit publication proof of mailing with respect to the application at 119 Merritt Street. It does appear to be the same document that was uploaded to the portal. It did appear to be in order, so we're gonna mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
Thank you, Counsel. So I'll try to be as succinct as possible, but we are six months removed from the last time we were here in front of the board, so I will just give a little bit of a recap here, especially since this is, this has been going on for almost three years, this application, maybe four. Back in 2021, the owner of the property filed an application to develop the, mostly the western portion of 119 Merritt Street. 119 Merritt Street is a very unique lot in the Port Industrial Zone because it's extremely undersized. It is 27, 500 square feet where 80,000 is required. It is pushed up against the Conrail tracks. It is on the Jersey City Bayonne border and is bound by Avenue C, Merritt Street, and Garfield Avenue. The site has largely been kept in a pretty bad condition. It hasn't been used for anything other than really for car storage. It is, there's a lot of trees on it. It's been overgrown. My client decided to finally utilize the property for what he thought would be a good use, which is a permitted use under the, in the P, the Port Industrial Zone, which is an auto repair shop. So our client filed an application, which came before this board, requesting a four-bay auto repair shop and an automatic car wash. That application was approved subject to us working with the traffic division to make sure that there wouldn't be significant queuing issues and backup onto Merritt Street. We also worked with traffic to change some of the, some of the direction arrows at the intersection and change some of the signage to make it a safer and easier ingress and egress to the site. So we had gotten the, the application to a place where we, my client could have moved forward with it. Unfortunately, he paved a portion of the property that was not approved to be paved under that approval. We came back before the board in September with a new application, September of last year, with what we thought would be a better use of the, the auto repair area. We removed the, the car wash, trying to alleviate some of the concerns about some of the queuing issues and some of the traffic going in and out. And what we came to the board with was a design that we had worked significantly with traffic on and worked with city planning to try and provide some landscaping on. As the chairman rightly pointed out during the last application, some of the deviations that were granted, he felt were granted because we had committed to keeping a significant amount of more landscape than had been there previously. We decided to withdraw the application that evening and go back to the drawing board a little bit to try and rectify the fact that, yes, my client had significantly increased the coverage on the property. And what we're back here with this evening is we think a better design, taking into account some of the comments that we received the last time we were in front of the board, including more trees, a fence with details, and what we think is a better circulation plan based on some of the comments that we heard from the board during the last meeting. One thing I will note is, is that I did go back and review not only the transcript from the first approval, but the transcript from last time. And I think there might have been maybe some confusion and some misrepresentation on what had been on the site for years and years there. And the fact of the matter is, is that the area that was paved has actually been a gravel area and a staging area for Conrail for a significant amount of time. There was undergrowth there, there was bushes, but it really wasn't a heavily forested area. So we do have some pictures to show the board tonight to show what that condition looked like at both times when we came before the board requesting approvals. And hopefully that will help explain some of the decisions that were made, even though we completely admit that my client made a mistake when he paved over the property. Finally, the other thing I would note is, is that Conrail has used this site for access to their tracks for a long, long time, I think over 30 years, as far back as I can tell. They never actually had an easement on the property. They were just utilizing it. Through this process, we have met with Conrail. We have agreed to enter into an easement to allow them to access the tracks, and they're gonna work with our client to make sure that they can get up to, to repair anything that they need to repair. So with that said, I'm gonna have Jeff Lewis come up. He's not gonna give as long of a presentation as last time because you did hear all this, but we would like to give a good reminder and just run through the plans. And then I do have Lauren Venon to go through our landscaping and show the improvements we made. And then I also have Carolyn Wistrel for, uh, uh, planning testimony, because we did not get to that last time. Okay, thank you, Counsel.
Yes, I do. Jeffrey Lewis, LEWIS.
Mr. Lewis, good evening. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Sorry, Cam, you bring it back. Okay. So, as was mentioned, we are a long, narrow lot at the very southern end of Jersey City, right adjacent to the Conrail tracks. Today we're here to propose, propose an automotive service center without a car wash, as well as associated office space, 20 parking spaces, vehicular circulation, as well as new landscaping. I'm gonna jump right into the site plan. So a lot of this is just reconfirming what we had previously agreed to. So the site will have all-new concrete curbs and concrete sidewalks. We are proposing two new curb cuts. Previously, it was three, but there is now one on Merritt, one on Avenue C, and we removed a third that was all the way at the eastern end of the property. There are two new ADA curb ramps. Those are located on Merritt, and those were originally approved. And there are also eight street trees, which were also previously approved. Looking onto the site, our buildings themselves, there's an, oof, sorry. There's an existing two-story building located at the corner. This will remain and be reused as an office. Below that, there's our new service center located along the rear property line. These two buildings are the same as our previous approval, and there are no changes to them, but I will go over them anyway. As far as vehicular circulation, there's the main entrance off of Merritt Street and one main exit off of Avenue C. Between them, there's a two-way drive aisle that connects the entire property with. Again, we removed that exit on the right side here and added a roundabout to improve the circulation at the end of the lot. There's a total of 20 parking spaces. Two of them are located right next to the office. Six of them are in the middle of the property here, and then the other 12 are located at that rear parking area. This shaded area here is that 10-foot-wide easement for Conrail that we're proposing. We also have landscape buffers on the property along Avenue C, along Merritt Street, and then wrapping all the way around the back. Those will be addressed with future testimony. There is a retaining wall located along Merritt Street. It starts right where the entry is at Merritt Street and extends all the way down to the eastern end of the property line. On top of this wall, we have a six-foot wood fence. That's on top of the wall along Merritt Street and actually extends around the side and all the way around the rear property line as well. Additionally, we have some Jersey barriers located here behind the parking space. This is to separate the parking area from the tracks. I mean, the fence is there as well, but we are at the same level of the tracks, and we just don't want anyone driving anywhere near them accidentally or on purpose. And the Jersey barriers will be able to stop that. That's really all there is on the site plan. I'm gonna go on and walk through the buildings briefly. Again, these have not changed from the previous application. So at the top, we have the two-story building that will be retained as an office space. On the floor plans, the first floor is used as a waiting area, as well as a customer counter, and there is a half bath. Then upstairs is the office and an additional half bath. On the exterior, the existing finish is just a concrete block. We're going to paint the lower-level concrete block gray color. And then on, on the top level, we're going to put a new green vertical corrugated metal siding as the finish, and that's actually gonna match the finish for the new service center as well. There's also two signs, which were previously approved as well, on the corner building. Looking to the elevations of, of the new service center, you can see we're matching the gray block at the bottom and then that green corrugated siding above. We have white, white metal garage doors. There are three total garages. Each of them have two bays. Two of the garages are for auto repair, two for oil changes, two for tire changes. And then there are two spaces at the end, which are used for storage of tools and materials. This is just showing our materials. This is the siding. Here's the garage doors, and this is the color for the, the block. And then lastly, we do have a stormwater mitigation system here. I can go over it briefly for you if you like. It's really just a dry well at the backside. And on the left, there are three buried pipes with catch basins throughout the, the site, bringing all the water to those retention pipes. That actually would conclude my part of the presentation. I could answer questions that you have about it, or we could do it at the end, whichever you prefer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Talk to me about the roundabout.
The roundabout would be used mostly for, internally for employees to just take cars and, just to make circulation a little easier. It's not necessary. If you prefer more green space, we do have a spot at the end. We'd like to maybe have a four-foot dub of that drive aisle, and we could stop it right there. It would be right about here. And then the entire circle, we could do a landscape area with a couple of trees, if that would be preferable to the board. We're happy to do that.
So, yes. I don't wanna speak for everybody.
For the, for the, for the use itself, it was a little more convenient, but it's not necessary.
No roundabout, Eddie, or yes, roundabout?
Well, the roundabout, there used to be a, you said there used to be a curb cut, a dirt curb cut?
Yes, there was a dirt curb cut here.
Okay, you eliminated that. There's no parking on that side of the street anyway, going all the way down.
Correct.
Now, existed, no parking on that side. But if we get rid of the roundabout, and they need to have a backup of cars, they're actually gonna have to go into the road.
Well, we do have, we have a full, we have a full 24-foot wide drive aisle, so we have a full with drive aisle. And instead of, like, the last spot, we would leave maybe an extension of four or five feet, so that the last car would be able to have room to back out while staying on the driveway. And we could do, again, we have all these, we're using these Jersey barriers. We could do a Jersey barrier at the end of that driveway as well, if you like, so that no one can drive up there.
No, I, I, I like the idea of everything being in the space. It's such a small space.
Yes.
And I, I see it all the time. And the, and the landscape here is like so much greater than what's been growing there. It's just, what's growing there, I don't even know if you could consider them trees, right? It's just like weeds that got real big.
Right.
Basically what they are, you know? And it's just, it's been a messes. The last 25 years I've been living in that neighborhood. Just nothing there. The fact that you're not going into the road, though, I like, I, I like the roundabout. You know, I think you have a lot more landscaping that, that property ever saw, you know? But that's why I'll leave that there.
Mr. Lewis, you said there were 12 parking spaces there?
In the back area, there's 12, yes.
Which is, where, where do you count the 12? Where are the 12?
Uh, that's starting, starting here is the first one.
Oh, got you. Okay.
To here.
Okay. And I believe you have 20 overall?
Yes.
Correct? And 18 is the requirement, right?
Right. Yes.
Okay, anybody else on the roundabout? We have one for and one against right now.
I will always take more trees and tree canopy over roundabout if possible. I think also too, considering the amount of cars that are gonna be coming through here and the nature of the work that might be done, that will also mitigate some of the exhaust and fumes. So if you don't need the roundabout, I would say no roundabout. Sorry, Eddie.
So I would say we don't need, need it. If you want, you know, we have someone here that's gonna be talking about the landscape. They can talk about what we would do there in turn, and then you can make your decision.
So...
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, that'll come with landscaping, too. I'm more concerned with the landscape buffer from that residential section across the street. I, I think that's it for me on architecture. Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Counsel, I do have one question.
Sure.
Did we get rid of the car wash use altogether?
We did, yes.
So we're only talking about oil changes, auto repair, and tire changes?
That's correct, yes. Again, that was when we first came before the bird. There was a significant concern that people would be queuing to use it, and they'd be lining back up into Merritt Street. So we just figured, let's get rid of it. Sure.
I only ask 'cause the plan still indicates car wash.
That is a mistake of my architect, and it will be changed when we submit, hopefully, for... Is that your plan? ...conformance sense. Okay. One thing I just wanted to bring up about that roundabout and kind of where it came from. If the board recalls, there was a proposal for an additional exit from the property onto Merritt Street. That was a recommendation of traffic. After presenting before the board last time and hearing some additional comments from planning, we decided to remove that. We felt that was an undue burden on the residential nature, neighborhood across the street, additional lights, additional cars going on onto their street. So the, the concept of that roundabout was to keep the cars within the property, but if, in speaking with my team, we can definitely get rid of it and make sure there's enough room for those last two cars to back up and turn around while maintaining a two-car drive aisle. Okay, thank you, Counsel. Next up, I have Lauren Venon. Sure.
Just get this plugged in.
Counsel, you said somebody had photographs of, I guess, the prior condition?
That will be part of Ms. Venon's presentation, and we will put it into the record since it was not uploaded.
Thank you.
Yes. Lauren Venon, V E N I N.
Ms. Venon, good evening. We've qualified you on the past. Your license is current tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Alrighty. Alright, so we're gonna focus on the landscaping, starting from Merritt Street and moving across the, the site north to south. So along Merritt Street, the plans do call for formalizing of the curb and the curb line along Merritt Street, which allows for the installation of eight street trees. And this is a forestry, Jersey City Forestry Standards compliant tree pit setup. So you have your 5x10 tree pit with the trees and the underplantings in the tree pits. Along the property line, then, we are installing a landscape buffer. I'm gonna see if this will let me zoom this in a little bit. Perfect. So you can see that we are creating a buffer of mixed evergreen trees and shrubs. Where space allows, we do have a double-staggered row, and this allows us to have a more upright and then a smaller, or then a, you know, shorter, wider in between, so that we are providing a very thorough amount of coverage between the parking area and the new streetscape along Merritt Ave, Merritt Street.
Counsel, let's mark this as A2, 'cause this is a colorized version, and I guess the other ones, if there's additional sheets, I don't know.
Do you wanna mark the whole presentation as A2?
Tell me how many slides it is.
Yeah, I have a second page.
Yeah, it's two slides.
Okay, so A2 is colorized renderings of the landscape plan previously submitted?
Yes, along with a, or a prior conditions photograph, which I'll put us on the next page.
That's the second sheet.
Second sheet, yes.
Okay.
All right, so the landscape buffer continues along the edge of what is currently shown on the plans as the roundabout. We are taking the larger evergreen trees along the property line with additional evergreen and deciduous plantings between that tree line and the curb. We continue this buffer then along the south side of the property, along the Conrail line. This is on the outside of the Jersey barriers to provide some screening and visual break between the Conrail line and the parking lot, particularly where the cars would be heading in and headlights facing in that direction. In this area, we have room for a triple-staggered row. And that continues along the Conrail property, filling in the parking lot islands at the easement cut through with additional grasses and native plantings. We have two additional parking lot trees, which meets the ordinance requirement for the number of parking spaces provided. The shrubs going in are going in at three to four feet, which is compliant with having a four-foot-tall buffer within the first two growing seasons. And the evergreen trees are going in at six foot to eight foot in size. So that is the landscape plan. The other information on the sheet is a summary of the ordinance requirements and the standard streetscape requirements as per Jersey City Forestry Standards.
Irrigation?
We are not indicating the irrigation system on the plans, but it can be provided if requested.
We intend to have irrigation, I suspect?
Yes, we can, yes.
Yes, and we will indicate it in the plans.
I can go to...
Before you move on to the next slide, obviously, you've heard from the board here this evening that they would probably like to see the, the roundabout removed. If that were to be done, could you testify as to what planned schedule could be used to, to fill in that space?
Just gonna zoom in on it a little bit, make it easier while we talk to it. Given the amount of space, we would definitely be able to fit some additional shade trees into that area to give a bit more canopy. Given overall maintenance concerns and not wanting to create a space that would then, we don't wanna invite more of weedy space, so it would probably make sense at that point, given the likely curb adjustment. We would have some lawn space and mostly ground cover directly under the trees, and then just beef up this back buffer area. If we get rid of the roundabout, we would be able to have something more similar to what we are providing in the back here by the Conrail property along this side to have that triple row, and then have your shade trees a little farther into the site. So it would just provide a little bit more insulation against the adjacent property.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
So basically, on the...
I think it came out, okay. On the north side and on the east side of what we're seeing, so if the roundabout was gone, you have like three layers of shrubs and small ones. As you get bigger, like wider, it's much, seems to me to be much harder to maintain, to keep clean, you know? With the, uh, things that get blown around and stuff like that, especially in certain areas, right? So, but your opinion, sometimes making it bigger, sometimes you get uncontrollably a little messy, too, at the same time.
It would require additional maintenance to keep that area clean. If we went to a larger planting area, the recommendation then would be to have an orderly edge to it with that triple row of shrubs, and then go to a simpler ground cover and possibly lawn underneath the trees, so that it would be an area that could be cleaned, cleared out regularly. Because it is a valid concern to have a, a very large area of landscaping in a spot where you're, you're going to have windblown trash, you're going to have a lot of maintenance.
More, more of different animals and stuff that would be living there, right? Basically. That's not too much of a concern, you know? I got them in my backyard, so that's not much of a concern. Okay, I was just wondering. And the north side, that's going right to the property line of Conrail?
The north side. So on this plan, the north side is along Merritt Ave here.
No, I mean, I'm sorry.
South.
The south side.
No problem. Yeah, so south, we are taking the landscaping. I'm just gonna zoom in a little, make it easier. We are taking the landscaping up to the property line. So we are running from the Jersey barrier back to the property line, and then on the other side where there is not the Jersey barrier, we are running from the curb line back to the property line.
Okay.
With landscaping.
All right, that's what I have.
Ms. Venon, the, um, do you have a, a drawing on the height of the shrubs?
I don't have a, a drawing indicating them.
So how high are they?
I can, I can give you, I can give you a, a little bit. And I, and I know it's hard with the abbreviations, because we, we know them. We are using two different types of upright junipers, which are going in to the JSWs here are our upright junipers. Our TOGs and our TGGs, which are, yeah, they're on the other part of the plan here, are, are brevities, so they get very high also. Where, what we have, the arrangement that... Where what we have, the arrangement that we have is a taller, so the larger material being a taller with a shorter shrub in-between, because as they get taller, you end up with a little bit of a gap at the bottom.
Sure.
So we're effectively setting upright evergreens close together with the smaller evergreen, kind of plugging the holes in-between. And where we switch to a wide, moderate height, something that's going to top out closer to six feet, we have the narrower uprights that will get in the 10-to-12-foot range in-between.
Okay.
So we're providing some visual interest by switching up that rhythm of tall and skinny, short and wide, and then taller, wider, and skinnier in-between.
For the benefit of the board and the public, just trying to visualize that, the height of the ceiling in this room is 10 feet?
Yeah, your skyrocket junipers are going to be, the Wichita blues are going to be about eight to 10 at maturity, your arborvitae are going to be in the 10-to-12 range.
Okay, thank you.
So I can go to the next exhibit that has the prior conditions? Hold on a second. There we go. All right, so the top pictures, so these pictures, these images are aligned so that the property lines do line up, so you can see the character of the site. This is an aerial photo from 2022, and you can see the character of the site prior to, when you say existing conditions, it's really prior conditions, and how this lines up with the proposed plan. So you can see the larger bare gravel area, gravel area with some weedy tree coverage, and then the underbrush, weed material underbrush in this area.
So that was all gravel underneath that?
It's, yeah, it's a gravelly area with some, I can, I'm going to try to zoom in a little bit on this. Sorry about this, let me just get back to, yeah, I can't quite zoom in on this view. But it's, here, we do have some canopy, and you just have some gravelly, wouldn't really call it soil, per se, underneath.
And that dotted line is the overlay of?
This is the property line.
Subject property, okay.
Yeah, so you can see this section of the property line lines up with the property line here.
Okay, any questions, anybody?
It was an aerial photo from 2022. I don't have the exact date of the aerial on hand.
I suspect you did not take the photo.
It was a near map image.
Yeah, I have nothing else this time, if anybody else does, you can move on. No, we can move on, I have nothing else if everybody's ready. Okay, thank you, Ms. Venin.
Yeah, and again, Chairman, you know, it's my understanding that that gravelly area has been used by Conrail as basically a staging area and a parking area to access the tracks for a long time, so, you know, I'm not putting this on as a fact, people are welcome to go look at Google Earth all they want. I went back to like 2025, and this was basically the condition that it was, has been for quite some time, so. With that, I have Ms. Wurstell, who's going to come up and go through the variances we're requesting.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Good evening. I do. Carolyn Wurstell, W O R S T E L L.
Ms. Wurstell, good evening, your license is current?
It is.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Thank you. So we're here this evening as has been presented to make these improvements and upgrades and changes to the subject property. There are a couple of variances that are related to this application. They're very similar in nature to the variances that, or identical to the variances which were previously requested and approved back in 2021, but we'll go through them again this evening. So the first one is for the minimum landscape buffer next to a residential, and somewhat related to that is also a minimum perimeter setback. So the Port Industrial District requires that a minimum landscape buffer of 50 feet be provided when you are adjacent to residential use, where we're providing about five feet four inches where we, at a minimum, where we are adjacent to the residential uses on the other side of Merritt Street. One of the things that, when we look at this application, we have to be aware of is the fact that the Port Industrial District was designed for really very large-scale industrial uses. The minimum lot area is 80,000 square feet, and your minimum lot width is 200 feet. So that's really big lots, you know, just under two acres. This lot is a little over 27,000 square feet, so it's a little bit less than, a little more than quarter the size of the minimum required. And our lot width at the narrowest point is 50 feet, and we get up to, I think, around 60, you know. So we're substantially undersized here, and we're really narrow and skinny. So when you sort of take the fact that we have this very narrow, skinny lot, and you then consider what our buffer requirements are, they don't match up at all. If we have to provide a 50-foot buffer from a residential use, we can't really use this lot, because that would be a 50-foot buffer along the entire frontage of Merritt Street, and you're left with nothing of the lot. Very similarly, we have a minimum perimeter setback variance, where you're required to provide a setback of 60 feet along the entire perimeter of your lot, and we are providing eight feet six inches. So again, this sort of, again, relates to the fact that we have a very narrow, skinny lot, and 60 feet was again for that minimum 200, you know, lot width, nearly two-acre lot. So what we are doing and trying very hard to do here is provide a combination of both landscape buffer, you know, we, as my colleague Lauren just described, there is, you know, significant landscape buffer using various tree, tree and shrub sizes and, you know, staggering them in order to create a very vegetated buffer, as well as providing some of that fencing. So that really helps provide some of that visual buffer. We are also, the way that we've oriented the design of the lot is so that all of the vehicles, you know, they're going to be parked on the far side of the lot, and they would most likely be parked, you know, headlight, you know, facing towards the train tracks. So you're going to reduce, you know, headlight glare, things like that. So that should help, you know, reduce some of the buffer between those parking spaces and the lots. And then the other thing really to consider too is the fact that this application is formalizing the sidewalk. Right now, when you, when you drive past it, there's no curb, there's no sidewalk, you know, it's just a metal fence and the pavement. So again, this is really providing that additional visual buffer by creating the actual sidewalk, which is supposed to be there and isn't, and providing those street trees. So you're really going to get a much more substantial visual buffer through the different improvements that are being done as part of this application, which really, I think, helped to meet the intent of that requirement, which is, again, to buffer those uses from your adjacent residential. The other variance we're requesting is in maximum, is for the signage setback for freestanding signs. We're required to have a setback of half of the front setback. Our front setback is 60 feet, half of that is 30 feet. That sort of puts your sign at like the middle of the lot, which is not really the appropriate place for it. So we are requesting a variance to provide a freestanding sign that's adjacent to the ingress driveway that would need that relief. The two signs that are on the building, they don't need the relief, but the one freestanding sign adjacent to the driveway access would need the relief. So again, you know, it sort of relates to the fact that this lot is not how the Port Industrial District envisioned lots being sized. The final variances we are requesting are for the curb cut width and the driveway width. The requirement is 10 feet is the maximum we're permitted, and we're requesting a width of 12 feet. You know, we, there was extensive conversations with, you know, the traffic department over the design of this, you know, there were, you know, turning templates were provided, and through all of that, 12 feet was sort of established as what everyone felt to be a really comfortable entrance and exit for what is a commercial use. 10 feet is the standard, but it's a standard for a lot of different things, including a one- or two-family home. 12 feet for a commercial use is probably a pretty good, it allows for a little bit of extra wiggle room for people coming in and out, but it's not going to result in a really wide curb cut that's wider than most people would perceive. So we think overall that these variances can be granted related to that C1 criteria for those buffers and setbacks and the signage setback requirements, you know, again, relating to the fact that this lot is severely undersized, and that the curb cut width and driveway width, I'm really thinking this is more of a C2 criteria, that the benefit of having slightly wider access for this commercial use, you know, outweighs any detriment of a slight increase of two feet for a curb cut, especially when weighed with the fact that we're creating the curb for this property as part of this application. I think in terms of the municipal land use law, this promotes Purpose A, appropriate use or development. The proposed use is permitted in that Port Industrial District, and it's sort of replacing the sort of car storage and parking that is there today, so that's really a much more appropriate use, and it will be much more well-maintained as a result of creating this new use on the property. It's consistent with Purpose E, talking about establishing population densities and wellbeings of the persons in neighborhood. Again, this is an industrial use in an industrial district, I think that's a very appropriate use, and the improvements here really will benefit the neighborhood as well. And then I think it's consistent with Purpose I, desirable visual environment. Again, you're really sort of creating a much better streetscape as a result of this application with the new sidewalks where there aren't any today, street trees, eight new street trees, you know, extensive landscaping on the property, and then just, I think it's going to result in overall, just a much better visual for that block. I don't see any substantial detriment to the public good. Again, it's the permitted use in bulk, as well as all of those improvements along Merritt Street with the new streetscape. And no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan. It's consistent with the purpose of the Port Industrial District to enhance and accommodate the city's, you know, sort of port waterfront with appropriate uses such as transportation facilities while adequately buffering them to protect nearby residential neighborhoods. It's also consistent with the 2021 Jersey City land use element, promoting innovative and industrial activity that's cleaner, greener, and job-creating. So I think this application is consistent with that, all of those, cleaner, greener, and job-creating. So I think overall that this application is consistent and that the variances are justified under both the C1 and the C2 criteria.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wurstell. I have no questions, anybody else?
I'm just going to wrap it up by, again, saying, my client is aware that he made a mistake here. He was not supposed to proceed with the paving of that. I think the level of detail and the time and energy that he's put into getting these plans into good shape shows that he's committed to try and right his wrong and try and clean this property up and make it into something useful. You heard from Ms. Wurstell's testimony, based on the zoning here, there's really very little you can do with this land other than this use. And I think promoting an active use here and an active commercial use will help keep the property clean and in use, and we hope that the board agrees and approves. Thank you.
All right, thank you, counsel. Before we open public, Mr. Lewis, do you have the previously approved plans accessible?
Yes, I do.
Can we take a look?
Sure.
Chairman, I think you're interested in seeing the site plan sheet?
Yes.
This is the plan with the car wash. So this was the car wash here, this was the...
Counsel, let's mark this as A4, just for purposes of the record.
The entry was, the entry was the same here, and then we had this big, open circular area and the same exit on Avenue C.
Just clarifying, Mr. Lewis, so this was the site plan that was approved as part of, counsel, do you know the resolution number? Ah, P 21053?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Great. And this was, this is not the plans that the board previously saw as part of this application?
That's correct, I have those as well.
All right, just wanted to make sure that was clear to everyone.
Do you have any questions about it, Chairman? I mean, I suspect, let me ask the question, the cloud-looking design with the striped lines on half the site is what the buffer was supposed to be?
Right, that would have been left as undisturbed wooded slash growth area. But, so that wouldn't have been planted?
It was supposed to be planted.
I'm sorry, my mic was off. Yeah, that was supposed to be planted, right? That wasn't just going to be left alone.
Do you know the answer to that?
I do. We didn't provide a full landscaping detail. I think as part of what we testified to the board was, there would be plantings there, but yes, it would almost be left to regrow what was there. We didn't provide a particular planting schedule. Obviously, we did provide for some buffering and some trees that were proposed, but yes, the idea was essentially to sort of let it go back to its natural state.
Which was gravel?
And, and some, some tree cover and some canopy, yes, yes.
Counsel, the resolution may indicate slightly different.
I believe that we indicated that we would leave the area as landscaped and that we wouldn't be disturbing the area. If there was testimony that that area had significantly more coverage at the time and more greenery, that was, that was a mistake in the testimony and a mistake in fact.
Mr. Lee, do we know why the owner decided to move ahead and do this? Was it oversight? Was it he just not caring about the previously adopted plan?
I think he was, I think he was given some bad advice by a contractor who told him that it would not be something that would require approval.
who told him that it would not be something that would require approval and he went ahead with it uh, without my knowledge.
That's why you get legal advice from lawyers, Mr. Lee. Uh, can we go back just to the site plan sheet?
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Chairman, I don't know what questions, if any, the board has regarding it. I think it's pretty clear and obvious.
Yeah, I think it speaks for itself. Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis.
You're welcome.
Everybody okay moving on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, at this time, let's open it up for a public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment, please come on up. Maybe. Yeah.
Yes. Jivani Hernandez, uh, J.I.O.V.A.N.N.I.E., Hernandez, H.E.R.N.A.N.D.E.Z. 21 Merritt Street.
Mr. Hernandez, good evening. We have three minutes for you, sir.
Hi, um, I guess we'll skate over the fact that uh, there was all vegetation there and not gravel, apparently. Um, I, my question is really the legitimacy of the business that's being conducted there. Um, from advisement from even Denise Ridley's office, our councilwoman, in that area, she had stated that uh, some sumses were given to the business for the business that was being conducted there for renting out uh, spaces for parking. Um, it's a nice picture of sedans being shown there on the, the graphics there, but it's all commercial vehicles. Large trucks, large box, box trucks, trailers, um, you know, all you can name it uh, that are just packed in there like someone's playing Tetris. It is not nicely lined up and organized at all. Um, constantly there is, you know, headlights that are being sh- just rightly shown right into residential homes. Um, the area is not kept well at all, overgrown weeds, trash being blown around all over the place um, that it's just stuck in there or someone eventually was playing some games with the chain link fences and sticking some uh, plastic bottles in those at some point. Um, I don't know where the perimeter of the actual business starts and ends, but there are vehicles outside of where the chain link fences are located. The pictures that I see being presented there are not current. They're not. Take a drive through there and you'll see yourself. Um, as someone had mentioned that they are familiar with the area, I live in the area, so I have to deal with it on a daily basis. So there's, you know, my, my neighbor that you'll see, you're here from in a moment. Um, my concern is, one, noise. Uh, I don't know if trees and a couple of bushes, bushes are going to necessarily stop the Conrail train that goes through around 2:00 or 3:00 a.m. that we hear constantly, that wakes up the entire neighborhood. Um, or if there is going to be any stop of headlights that are going to be shown right into homes right across the street. Um, I don't know if trees and a couple of bushes are going to stop that, so maybe some kind of actual physical barrier between that and the residential homes would be more suffice. Um, I question the owner's uh, I question my faith in the owner's business conduct of what has already been presented, of what apparently was vegetation there, then magically turned into gravel, then magically turned into asphalt. Um, what is currently being conducted there as a parking lot with a parking sign right directly in front of the business where apparently wasn't supposed to be done in the first place. Um, all of those things need to be taken into account and also just the appeal of the actual property itself. Um, there's trash all along it through it, there is um, trash adjacent to it. Um, we constantly get homeless that are camping adjacent to the property there. I've seen, even seen one starting up a fire. So this is all concerns of people that live in the area and have to deal with this on a daily basis.
That was your three minutes, Mr. Hernandez.
Okay.
Thank you. We appreciate your time. Anybody else? Please, come on up.
I do.
Okay, let's do it.
Kathleen with a K, Cork, Q.U.Y.R.K., 16 Ocean Avenue.
Good evening, ma'am. We have three minutes for you.
I'm here to discuss 119 Merritt Street. Um, I live on Ocean Avenue. I've lived there all my life. I want to say that this is something that the mayor had said once. It's when you first come into Jersey City, he wants a, a nice clean look. Well, it's, it's terrible. There's trash shrooned all over. They did the blacktop, the blacktop's there, they have gates. And on the gate, we have a picture that my neighbor has, and it says for rent. He's renting that out right now. There's all trucks up there, they're parked every which way. There's a little car like parked on the grass. You have the building on the corner of, of Avenue C. And inside, next to that, there's, it's all enclosed, there's just cars all thrown in there. No license plates, no nothing. Outside, there's like a flatbed. It's been there probably two years. There's bags of, of garbage there that, that's been there. He, he doesn't clean up anything. And you know, it's just that, you know, we'd like to see it nice too, but we feel that we're being lied to. That he's saying he wants to do this, he wants to do that, and he doesn't do anything that he says. He just made it a parking lot and he's renting it out now, so he's making money on that. And he came to you in good faith for you to approve something, which you did, and then he just ne-gagged on it. Didn't even bother to do it. And it's just, you know, it's, it's terrible that he's allowed to do this and not clean it up. He said at the last meeting he's going to clean it up. He has not made the least bit of interest in cleaning up the area. It's like garbage all over the place. It's, 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 it's a shame. Right next to that little building, there's like um, a medical van and there's a sign, the city put a thing up, no parking on the sidewalk. It's right there. The van's right next to it. He has no regard for what they're supposed to be doing. And you know, it's very frustrating. I would like something nice too, but I feel that we can't trust what he's saying. Like he says one thing and he turns around and he does the exact opposite, or he just does what he wants. You know, and he has spaces up there all lined up for par- you know, they're not even pulled into spaces. One day you have a truck, there was, there's been burned out um, SUVs up there. It, it looks terrible. And this is one of the first things that you see when you come into Jersey City. And I think it's, it's a real shame that this has been allowed, that he keeps doing the same thing and he's, he's telling you one thing, but he's not doing what he's saying he's going to do. And I'd like it to see it, see it look nice, but I don't have any faith in that being happening because it, it hasn't happened in what, two years or whatever? So, and you know, that's my sight on it and that I wish you can come down and see what it looks like and then you live there, because I've lived there my whole life. And it's just a shame that he's allowed to get away with that. Or that, you know, he has no regard to telling you people what he wants and then just saying, nope, I'm not doing that. He blacktopped the whole top too, to make a parking lot. There's all the spaces, but you know, and he, he has everything shrooned all about. It's not even like neat. And you know, there, there was a meeting how long ago? Five months ago? You'd think that he would have some initiative to get out and clean it up and have somebody come and like rake and whatever. But there's garbage all over, black garbage bags sitting there and, and nothing's done about it. So I, I hope that you take all that into consideration and that, you know, there's something followed through that this is taken care of. Because I'd love to see it like nice landscaping, but at this point, I, I really don't believe it. Because I think they're just saying things and they're not coming to fruition. It's, it's not happening, so. I appreciate your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you, ma'am. You too. Anybody else from public? Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, seeing what public, I move to close.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Public is closed. Counsel, do you want to address the commercial parking situation? Is there one that you're aware of?
Um, that was actually how I uh, became aware that the paving had been done because my client received a ticket for not registering the parking lot. Uh, I'm not aware that he's running a business or offering the parking spots to anybody at this time. It's my understanding that he does have some vehicles that are his personal vehicles there. Um, I was not made aware by him or anybody else that he's been trying to hold those spaces out for commercial uses. Um, I can tell you that he has received a ticket for the parking, uh, for failing to register the parking lot. He's received tickets for the garbage. He's gone and pled guilty to those. He's paid, paid his fines. I've routinely told him about keeping the property in good order. I spoke with him just yesterday. He said he had pulled a bunch of the trucks off of the property. Um, but that's all I can say. I'm, I'm not out there every day looking at the property, but you know, that is what he has represented to me.
Okay, so are these commercial trucks? Are there personal trucks, pickup trucks? What are we talking about here?
Uh, I think he has a couple vans that he owns that are on the site.
When you say van, you mean passenger van or, okay?
Yeah. Um, but you know, I mean, I've, I've been out to the property two or three times. Yes, there are some uh, cars parked on the property. Um, I can't speak to whose cars are parked along Merritt Street. Uh, there's not a curb there now. Obviously, the proposal here would provide a curb, which would hopefully prevent uh, that kind of activity. Um, but I, I can't speak to who's parking on Merritt Street. I can say that yes, he, he has parked a few of his personal vehicles on the property. He's received tickets for that. He's pled guilty to that and he's paid his fine for that.
Okay, but it's ongoing?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, I, I did go to the site a week and a half ago and there were multiple cars there, uh, not just vans, but there were multiple cars parked there, so. I mean, I don't know if they're his.
I don't know either.
Yeah, I don't either. But there's multiple cars there.
Just, just for, but um, I guess it, it's, it's a, a lot of area right now that wants, wants to get developed. I understand that. Um, so many years now we've been talking about this. Um, see, but um, to make the sta- for him to make the statement that that his vehicles, he owns a lot of vehicles and a lot of beat up vehicles too, because that is always trucks there, vans there, personal cars. But also too, uh, the planner stated, there's no sidewalk. There's no street. It like blends. And I got to admit, some of the neighbors park facing outside that fence.
Sure.
And that could be where lights go. Then so hopefully having everything inside the space would prevent lights from flashing up people's houses because across the street are residential homes, you know?
Yeah.
Um, but the um, there, there's always been a mess there the last three years. It got out of hand after the bus company officially left there, you know, uh, it became a mess, you know? And that's what, uh, very bad I saw. And I got to agree with the neighbors from the community. First thing you look at when you turn off Avenue C, it's, 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 it's a major, major eyesore on a piece of property that boggles my mind what you could do with it. I don't, you know, that's, that's, that's the one thing too. I, I would like to say that for the record, it's not much you could do with that property.
And you know, just addressing some of the, the light shining out of the property, again, that's, that's the point of some of the fencing, the landscaping we're putting in. Um, and, and I'm, I'm not here to tell you that my client has been a saint and kept the property in, in great condition. What I can say is, is that he's spent a lot of money and time paying experts, paying architects, paying me to try and get this done. And I don't think he would be doing that unless he was serious about actually trying to, to make this piece of property work.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. Matt, have anything you want to share?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chairman. Um, so this is, as uh, Mr. Lee and Ms. Wurstell both mentioned, this is in the Port Industrial District. Um, and the purpose of that district is to provide for port-related industry and industry-supporting logistical uses while providing standards that successfully um, you know, separate the potential impacts of those uses from adjacent residential areas. Um, and so that's where some of these standards around minimum perimeter setback, landscape buffer from a residential use came up. Um, I just have a, a quick question for Ms. Wurstell. Um, so if the, given the size of the lot, if the minimum perimeter setback and landscape buffer from residential use variances were not granted, in your opinion, would that deprive the property of all reasonable use?
I think so. I don't know that you could fit anything on this lot. I mean, it, the, the narrowest part is 50 feet wide. If that whole 50 feet has to be a buffer, because all the residential uses are across the street from Merritt, you're left with like, you know, about a 10-foot wide strip at the very rear of the property adjacent to Conrail. Uh, there's nothing, you're not allowed to do anything else with the property.
And, um, counsel, I'm obviously, um, I'm a planning professional, you're a legal professional. I guess, are there any? Does the board have jurisdiction to deny property of all reasonable use?
So the application before the board is the application before the board. We're not going to entertain hypotheticals as to whether or not that there's a no vital use of the property.
Okay.
So I would say that the variance is being sought or what are being sought. I think that uh, Mr. Wurstell's testimony is her testimony. I think if the board has questions as to the legal issues implicated, based on the testimony, that's appropriate for me to respond to.
Okay, certainly, understood. Um, and then Ms. Wurstell, I guess, given the purposes of the perimeter setback and landscape buffer from residential use to insulate um, these types of industrial and commercial uses from residential impact, I guess, what are some potential negative impacts here? And how does this, and maybe, um, and how does this, this site plan as proposed mitigate those potential negative impacts?
Sure. Um, so yeah, obviously the, the intent of the buffer is to provide sufficient space to provide landscaping and, you know, fencing and whatever to provide that buffer. Um, and you know, 50 feet may be very appropriate when it's a very, very large scale port industrial use. Um, we can't fit 50 feet on this property. It just doesn't work. What has been done here um, is multiple changes to the condition or is proposed here is multiple changes to the condition. Uh, the first is, again, the establishment of a curb and a sidewalk, which do not exist today. Um, so again, that sort of establishes an edge to the street which doesn't exist and again, provides to the start that visual buffer, you're going to get street trees, you're going to get a curb, you get a sidewalk. So again, creating that edge of the street, um, which will address a lot of the concerns from the community about people parking there illegally. Uh, because there won't be any space for them to park. Um, then we are proposing, um, you know, fencing along and then landscaping along that edge. Um, so again, that's providing that visual buffer, um, you know, where we, we are able to, to stack as dense as we can, um, which is on that sort of upper end of the parking lot to the, I guess, the eastern side. Um, you know, again, you're sort of seeing some of the, the elevation change there, but we're, we have the fencing that, and the landscaping. So again, that, that goes up high, that should help to prevent some of the light glare that, that is there. Um, you are also going to have, you know, at the lower end, that's where um, the facility is, you know, and it has doors. So again, when cars are being worked on, it, they're at the end of the night, those doors go down and so you shouldn't be getting the same, you know, light glare, you know, there shouldn't be, seeing some of those same impacts. So um, we're seeing the, the way that the operation of the facility is, the way that it has been designed to have all of the parking, you know, close to the tracks. Um, so again, so all of that should hopefully reduce um, the likelihood or instances where there's light glare. Um, and then, um, you know, so I, I think that there's just the multiple ways, those mitigation measures to be, that are being added and layered at this property should hopefully really address and mitigate those major issues that are, that are happening or where they're raised as a concerns. Um, and so that, that's sort of how it's being dealt with on the fact that we have a very narrow, skinny lot here.
Ms. Wurstell, there's nothing that prevents the applicant from providing a larger buffer on that interior side off of Merritt that was proposed originally.
Uh, so I'm sorry, where, where are we looking off of?
I don't have it on the screen.
Are, are you talking about on the eastern end of it? Are you talking about a thicker buffer along the roadway? Are we talking about the?
I have to pull it up because somebody took it off the screen. So I will tell you exactly what I'm talking about.
Is it this?
Counsel, were you referring to the previously approved site plan? Or the current proposed site plan?
Can I see the site plan?
So this was the previously approved site plan?
Can I see the whole site plan? Cheat, I can't see the arrow.
Oh, sorry.
So directly opposite Avenue C along Merrited Ave or Merritt Street, right? It's not your testimony that more buffering cannot be placed. Other side.
So on the eastern side of the property?
The eastern side of the property. It's not your testimony that more buffering cannot be placed over there. Where the proposed roundabout is, where the additional parking spaces are. There's no testimony that says that buffering cannot be provided there.
Okay, um.
You can't meet what requirement, Mr. Lewis?
Let me, I.
Did you just say you can't meet the requirement?
We definitely can't meet the requirement. You know, I'm just trying to think about how the requirement works. The requirement works, the buffer is from the residential uses and the residential use is across the street on Merritt. So the.
So the testimony is not that more buffering cannot be provided on that portion of the site, the easterly portion of the site. That's what I'm after.
We can provide more buffer, and we were proposing to, by removing a portion of, removing the roundabout and ending in that. So we could provide more buffer and landscaping in that portion.
And there is nothing to say that that buffer cannot go all the way west and take out those parking spaces.
Counsel, is there, I believe there's a parking requirement for this parcel as well?
Thank you, madam, asking the witness.
Yeah, and I was about to say that if we were to start pushing that further west, taking all that space up, you then start running into the issue of then you don't have space for parking, you don't have space for site circulation.
What are the numbers?
So it's 18 spaces required, correct? Can we bring up the previously approved plan?
What are the 18 spaces based on?
It's the number of bays.
Number of bays?
No, there's actually, there's a little office space that needs some extra parking as well. So for the parking, we actually do need 20 in total. It's 18 for the service station and two for the office.
And two for the office.
So it is, so we're at the requirement of 20 right now.
For based on the size use that you're proposing, number of bays and the size of the office?
Correct.
Correct.
And if we had four less bays and no office, we wouldn't require as much parking. Do we agree with that?
Yes.
Yes, we do agree with that. So we can put more buffering on the easterly side of the lot. We could. Not saying we are, I'm not saying that's what's proposed.
But it would be a different application.
It would be a different application, but it is what's proposed, or what could be done, not what's proposed.
Correct.
Okay. Chairman, I have no further questions. I just needed that for purposes of the record to help the board.
Sure.
And to help understand utilization of property.
So. Mr. Lewis, if you could go, just bring the previously approved plan up again. I want to touch the screen so bad. How many spots were proposed on the original approval?
There's, I think it's eight or 10. Let me zoom in on this one.
I think there's more than 10 there, shown in the drawing.
It was a total of six spaces total.
Okay, so the cars that are drawn on that drawing, that's queuing up for the car wash?
Correct.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions? So we're gonna, we'll do a public discussion. We'll do, we'll have a board deliberation as soon as we're done with.
Yeah, I'm just happy to add really quick that staff produced a memo dated 9/6/2024. It was in response to the original submission as part of this application. The principles explored in that memo still stand as the, you know, broader proposed uses and density still stand. That memo recommended six conditions and it, and I don't know if counsel is happy to agree to those six conditions.
Yes, I've reviewed and we would agree.
And it sounds like the board is interested in delivering further conditions, so I will, I will sit back and let you guys deliberate.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, let's, for, we don't do this often, anybody that's here. This is the most democratic thing that can ever happen, where we just talk about it on public record and right out in the open. So I love this. Anybody want to start?
Chair.
The last part of this proposal just now that was brought up. The fact that on the east side with the roundabout, yes, they could put more, I understand what counsel was saying, they could put more landscaping there. But also it becomes an eyesore, and you see it at the public service sites and stuff like that. When we have all these shrubs and they're not clean because of the wind blowing and the debris in the neighborhood. That there's somebody not out there all the time maintaining them. And, you know, the contractor's going to maintain them, but it's not going to be an everyday thing. And it becomes an eyesore on a corner like that. So as much as you put shrubs for me, where we have all the garbage blowing underneath them and nobody's addressing it, it becomes an eyesore in the neighborhood. So I understood when the landscape presented and brought that up. The deeper we go, the harder it is to maintain and clean. With that, I understand the neighborhood's concern right now. The guy's not being able to do what he wanted to do at first with the property or whoever owns this property. But the thing is, you know, he made it harder on himself to achieve that because he was approved. But with that, for me, I don't live on those blocks, but I do consider that my neighborhood. You know, walking distant, I'm there. Doctor Gonzalez got a kick out of this. I drive by there about, you know, 10 to 15 times a week. I have to look at this all the time. And it always boggles my mind that you could fit anything in there. Never by the car wash at the time. But the fact that he's trying to do something, once I feel is established, then you can maintain it. Then the people from across the street won't be parking on that road facing their cars. Because if you go there on a Saturday or Sunday, they're hanging out in front of their cars, they're cleaning their cars. They're hanging out there, you know? But it's facing the people's houses across the street.
And I'm not saying that's right, but the current condition encourages that.
Yes, but it's been like that for the last 20 years.
Exactly, exactly.
So by having this buffer now at a sidewalk at a curb, yeah, I think it's a, it's a good thing.
So.
For me, that's what I'm saying.
So this is the first step?
Yeah.
You know, I, believe me, I hear the public. This is, and they're absolutely right. This is, I want to swear so bad right now, but I can't.
You're not, they're not going to have room to park in front facing the builders across the street. So if they're renting spaces inside later on after everything is developed, that's where they're going to have to park inside. You're not going to have the room on the outside.
And the way the parking's configured, it's on the opposite, it's not on the Merritt side of the lot. Not that people aren't going to back into those spaces.
And the shrubs are going to cover it.
So it's not that the cars are parking directly on the Merritt Street side of the lot. They're on the other side, they're on the Conrail side of the lot. So I, you know, I think the landscape buffer. So the spots to the, which way is east? Yeah, east is to the right. So the spots from the Conrail cut through that's on there to the right. You know, what's appropriate there? What's, what's an appropriate number and also to have the buffer to those houses across the street?
Another thing, let's keep in mind that the buffer is not for the sound of the Conrail train. You're never going to stop that.
No, absolutely.
I am six blocks maybe away, five blocks away, and I hear it in my bedroom. You're not going to stop that. That's going to happen.
As the application was approved before with that whole area on the east side landscaped, whatever, would that have provided the buffer from the lights, correct, right?
Yes.
So I think that's my issue, Mr. Chair, is that, you know, you know how much we hate this when we approve something and it's not done the way that we've approved it.
Of course.
But also that. I mean, I'm taking a line from Commissioner Torres. I drive by and I've seen many cars parked there. And, you know, I just, I mean, it's a bit of a problem for me, to be honest.
Chair, I share the same issue here. I think the buffer is very important to the neighborhood as well. And I think that variance that's requested, for me, it seems to be a big issue for me. I think it would be very detrimental for the neighborhood as well. What I would have liked to see is a conforming application.
I don't know that they can.
Yeah.
I don't think they make this lot conforming. And this is.
That's part of the problem.
This is the tough part.
Right.
Is, you know, what's worse?
Yeah. And I hear the concerns of the community as well.
And what's worse, you know, saying that nothing goes there? And the condition of that site never improves?
I mean, I, yeah, I think.
If nothing goes there, that would always stay the way it is now.
Right.
That's, that's.
So you don't, so you don't want blight, right? Which is what I think everyone can agree is what this looks like now and has looked like in past. However, the challenge for me is, again, there was an application that was approved, it wasn't followed. And they brought us back something that, in my opinion, doesn't even really sort of split the difference between the two. And I don't know that you could, right, based on the variances you're requesting. But I also know too, when you have cars that are parked illegally, when you have commercial vehicles that are parked in spaces where they're not supposed to go, the buffer is really important because you're talking about different heights of headlights. You're talking about different kinds of cars moving in and out. You're talking about, you know, different kinds of exhaust that people have to subject themselves to the sound of in addition to what's already happening with Conrail, right? And I understand, you know, I've had this problem with properties in my ward where they've done things, we've asked them to move it, they've cleared it out, and they've been good neighbors, right? So I think part of this too is that the applicant is professing to now be a good neighbor, but it's still is not to where I think it should be. So that's, you know, I feel like, I feel like they're trying to split the difference, but not in a way that is, that it could be done a little bit more.
And remember, it's been said that this is a good first step. The first step was back in 2022.
Yeah.
When we approved it. And then it wasn't, we approved something there that was going to be what we thought was good for that area, right?
It was going to be a car wash and some type of repair, but.
With all that greenery there, that was whatever it was going to be, but then nothing happened because it wasn't built that way.
Well, the car wash was an issue for traffic. So as it came back and readjusted it.
I get that, but I'm saying, then he started doing stuff that was not approved. That's my issue. So we take another step today. We approve this one.
I, I mean, I don't know. I feel the only thing that he did that really was a smack in our face was the fact that he paved some of the gravel area.
But we did not approve.
But I'll be honest with you, not till you showed me an overview of it, that I ever knew there was a gravel area back there. You cannot see it from Merritt Street. You're not going to see it when you make the turn off Avenue C.
Yeah, but that's not the point, Commissioner Torres.
I understand that. I understand that. But that spot that we are talking about is very hard to see now. And what are we going to get? I mean, once he, if he develops this, because we approve it, if he doesn't, the fact is that you're going to have a garage. And there is no way you're going to have trucks and cars sitting in the middle of that road, in that lot, the way they are now.
Yeah.
They have parking spots. Otherwise, nobody's going to be able to move in and out. You know, and I don't know. Landscape, the last time the landscape, I want to say for the record, the last time the landscape came to mind, I mean, I stood a little quiet on it. I should have said something more. But I don't know what you guys are talking about when you said there's landscape there. It's a jungle. It's a mess. That's my opinion. That is not.
Well, that's how it was originally presented to us.
And I think just because, just because currently it's a jungle does not mean that they cannot do additional landscaping to better manicure it, right?
Overgrown trees and weeds that, you know, when we were kids, we had these weeds that grow and they became trees eventually. But were.
Obviously, we can do better than that.
Yes, and that's what I hope that this will do.
And Tom Lean hit the nail on the head. You know, this isn't a cheap team sitting in front of us. So obviously, the applicant's not hiring this team to get out of a couple parking tickets. You know, I think that the intent is to actually improve the lot.
Yes.
And improving the lot to me means changing the landscaping, not being okay with what it used to be.
You can't leave what's there.
Yes.
The shrubs and stuff, as they start, the tree for shades, a start, you know? The actual trees.
And, you know, my feelings aren't hurt because he paved the lot over. Because we know, you know, we've had far worse done to us.
We see far worse.
But paving can be taken up. That can be corrected. It's not that there's a 50-story building that appeared on that site while nobody was looking. So, you know, paving can be taken care of. It's not the end of the world. The buffer is important. The buffer is massive to me. I don't know what you're saying.
Let's move it forward and see what happens. Take it for a vote. That's what we do.
Okay. No, I mean, we're obviously not going to tell everybody what our vote is before we vote. If we're all satisfied with the discussion, let's entertain a motion then.
Staff isn't quite clear on the board's intention with regards to the roundabout versus further landscaping? And if that would be a condition here as part of what is being voted on?
That'll be in the motion. Right, Doc?
Incorrect, Chairman. Right now, the application is as presented to the board.
Okay.
With the roundabout.
Okay, so we'll do a motion on whatever, what was presented to us tonight. I don't make motions. I know you're in a tough spot.
They would not adjust the roundabout at all.
Before we call for the motion, Chairman, Mr. Lean, do you disagree with the fact that the roundabout is still in the application?
I believe the testimony was that we would be okay with removing the roundabout and providing landscaping. You heard testimony from our landscape architect who provided. You heard testimony from our landscape architect who, who provided a path forward on that. So if that's a condition of approval.
Are you amending the application to remove the roundabout?
We would be willing to amend the application and agree to that as a condition of approval.
So you want this board to decide whether they're going to vote with the roundabout or without it?
I, I am saying that what we are putting forward to the board is the testimony that was provided, which is we can remove the roundabout and re, uh, and replace it with landscaping. So I think the application before the board is without the roundabout with landscaping as testified to by Ms. Vennan.
Okay, and the.
So it sounds like the application has been amended to remove the roundabout.
And only the roundabout.
And provide some additional landscaping that we don't know what that would be, but that could be accomplished with some lawn and some canopy of some sort is the testimony as I recall it.
That's correct.
So, Mr. Chair, the, uh, application has been amended. We just, we're clear on that. So I will, I will make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve case P 2023-0106. With the condition that the roundabout will be removed and replaced with landscaping. That's my motion.
Do we have a second? Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Commissioner Torres?
To the public that came out, you know, thank you. Thank you. We, we like hearing from the public. We'd like to let you, um, you know, this is a start, you know, hopefully, yes, we need to see if we have cleaned up, something to be done with it. For the very, the variances that they're seeking and stuff, I, for me, it's not such, uh, detrimental. I, actually, the curb cuts could even be a little bigger because there's no parking on that block. There's no parking on those streets. All it's going to do is make traffic go smoothly. People go in, people get out smoother. So I agree with making the curb cut a, a bigger, you know, I think it's a good idea. And, um, to the developer. Thank you for hanging in there and trying to get this thing accomplished. I mean, that's what I can say as a neighbor, from a neighbor. It could just be abandoned and you could have walked away, uh, and not do nothing with this property. It's a, it's a very hard property to work on. So, um, I hope the developer works with the neighbors and accomplishes what was approved here tonight. And with that, I vote a big eye.
Commissioner, Councilwoman Prince Harry.
All right, so, so I am pleased to hear that the roundabout is coming out and there's going to be more buffer. I, when you purchase a property and you get approvals to the property, you're supposed to build to what is approved. So it is, I have difficulty, right, with them coming back and asking for a second bite at the apple with something that maybe could have penciled out a little bit differently. Um, and, and I, and knowing the problems we have with negligent property owners and it's, it's, it's a bane to a neighborhood when every day you walk out of your house and you see how filthy a spot is. I understand that they want to develop it to get rid of the blight. But when they come in and say that they're going to clean it and then they don't clean it, or they come in and they say that they are not going to allow cars to park there and they allow there, like that, that is not an issue for this board to adjudicate. But I want to get on the record that it is a serious problem across the city and I've, you know, dealt with plenty of it in my own ward. I, I also know too, though, that there is value to, to having something there. And so with the condition that the roundabout will be removed, I will vote aye.
Commissioner Gangadon.
So I want to thank the public for coming out this evening and voicing your concerns as well. Based on what's there and what's being proposed is totally two different things. And, um, since the roundabout is going to be removed, that gives a little more buffer. And with that said, we ask the developer to really, um, work in good faith with the community as well. And to clean up all the garbage as quickly as possible. And respect the neighborhood. Respect everyone that lives within the neighborhood. With that, I'll vote aye.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
So I had a problem initially with this application until we decided to amend it. And, uh, that's really the only reason I'm voting for it. As you know, we've been, I think Chairman and I have been on the board longer than, than a lot of people have probably been alive here in this building. I'm just kidding. And one of our problems is the, that, you know, when you, for the owners and developers out there, we're, 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 we're taking our time to come here. We're not getting paid. Uh, this is not easy every Tuesday. I know Chairman puts a lot more time than, than I do. And, uh, you know, we, we really care about the community, but when we're doing something and we vote on something and we amend it or we do this or we do that. We, and then we find out that it wasn't built that way, kind of, it's kind of a slap to our face. Um, and so I think this is probably going to be the first time that I'm going to vote on a, uh, project that came back to us where the developer did something that was not approved. I'm very big on that. It doesn't matter if it was just a parking lot or 50 stories. And as, uh, Councilwoman, um, just, just said, uh, this, we take this very seriously and I personally take it very seriously. But again, uh, there's nothing there and I hope this time, there was nothing there before two years ago when we approved it. And I'm hoping that there's still nothing there. And, um, you know, we'll, we'll be keeping a close eye on this, uh, property and make sure that it's built the way that we've now approved it. And, um, and that, that, uh, with that, I'm going to vote aye.
And Chairman Langston.
So. First of all, let me, let me thank all you guys. I, I appreciate the, the honest deliberation on record. You know, that's not an easy thing to do, but I know we're all very comfortable together and, uh, I think it's interesting to see. As far as the applicant, you know, paving over the lot. You know, I don't take it personally. I check my feelings at the door every night. If, if I considered that, um, you know, I think I'd be doing a disservice to this position. I, I, believe me, I understand the neighborhood's concern. There, there's got to be a first step to clean up the property. It's obviously not okay the way it is now. It needs to change. And this is the person that owns the property now. So that's who we're betting on here. And it really sounds like my vote's going to be aye, but it's not. It's a no for me. Um, I, I. I appreciate, Council, I appreciate the removal of the roundabout. But I think we could do better with that buffer. I think that buffer should be bigger. I think we're almost there. But I don't think this current plan with the roundabout removed is it. I just think there, there needs to be more of a buffer that at least comes out to, you know, the neighboring property across the street, that first residential property. So I know it, it's approved, but, and I get the honor of voting last, uh, but it was a no either way for me. So, uh, that's my vote. It's a no.
Great. Motion carries, uh, as amended for one. So they, there will be seven conditions, the sixth in the staff memo, plus the seventh regarding the removal of the roundabout in exchange for further landscaping in line with Ms. Vennan's testimony.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody. Um, it is 7:35. We're going to take 10, I guess. All right. We'll see in a few. Okay, could we come to order again, please? We're just going to jump out of order. We have one item that wants to carry. So we're going to call item 11. It's case P 2024-0178. It's a review and, review and discussion of, uh, FIAET Broadway Redevelopment Plan Amendment. Good evening, Council.
Chief Paulino, Genova Burns, on behalf of the applicant. I understand there's a quorum issue. And if that's.
That's correct, Council.
I'll assume that. I understand. We'll talk about it later.
Well, you can now.
But I assume you're carrying it, so that's fine with me. Thank you, Council. Chairman, I think for, for the edification of everybody here, uh, this is a review and discussion of the FIAET Broadway Redevelopment Plan Amendment. In order for this to be heard by the body, there have to be five eligible commissioners to vote. One commissioner does have, uh, a conflict that requires recusal on the matter, which would leave the board with four members and therefore there isn't a quorum for the board to hear that particular amendment. So, uh, I think it's imperative upon the board and possibly yourself, Mr. Chairman, to make sure that, uh, we can, we can have a quorum at the next hearing. This has been lingering and I, I think it's only fair that, that we reach out and make sure we, uh, we have five eligible voters for it at the. I think Council, we filed this in October. I, I, I think we, we did file this in October. Oh, so it's not that old. Before that. There was discussions well before that, believe it.
Cam?
Um, we can give this the next hearing date, which is April 22nd.
Okay, so we'll carry to a date certain, April 22nd. This is a notice for that. You will not receive new notice.
I, I don't think there's any.
There is no notice. What am I saying? Don't listen to me. Okay, thank you, Council.
Thank you.
All right, so let's move on to the review and discussion of certified artist Susie Lau and Michelle Vitale. Formal action may be taken.
Okay, so the ABC Artists, uh, Board of Certification, um, no, no, ACB, ACV. Anyway, the Artist Certification Board certified Michelle and Susie as artists using criteria one, two, three, four, and five. And the planning department, um, recognizes their certifications and would recommend that you approve them as certified artists so that they can get the certified artist housing that they are granted under the zoning. And planning staff recommends approval.
Okay, thanks, Cam. Any questions? Forgot, Eddie moved. Um, okay, is there anybody here from the public that wants to comment? Anyone from public?
Chair, seeing no public, I move to close.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. We have staff's recommendations, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the review and discussion of certified artists Susie Luo and Michelle Vitale. And, uh, is presented to the board tonight and forward to, uh, City Council for formal adoption.
Okay, motion made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadon. Councilwoman Prince Ari. Commissioner Torres. Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item 10. It's case P 2025-0059 is a review agent procedure amendment. We're getting Sophia. She's going to be right here.
Okay, hi, hi, everyone. Sorry, I'm also on the Environmental Commission right now. So, these are proposed changes to our ordinance to clarify our review agent procedures. Of course, with using Tyler, the way that we involve review agents in our development review process has changed. So we added, uh, some of those changes clarifying the process in the ordinance. And we also added something specifically talking about JCMUA's involvement in review procedures in connection with stormwater ordinance requirements, which are already existing. And that is the summary of the changes that are before you guys today.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Anybody? All right, is there anybody here from public that wants to comment? Anyone from public?
Seeing no public, I move to close.
All right, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P 2025-0059 is presented to the board tonight and forward to City Council for formal adoption.
All right, motion made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadon. Councilwoman Prince Ari. Commissioner Torres and Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you. All right, uh, we'll call case P 2024-0180 is a preliminary and final major subdivision, uh, for Harborside Place.
Okay, thank you. Um, for the record, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant. And if I can indulge the board quickly before I go into this case, I, I'm also, uh, the attorney on, on case number 21 tonight, and, um, I'm, I'm, uh, requesting that that be carried. Um, asking, uh, for the May 6th date, if possible, with, uh, preservation of notices.
Cam?
Yes, we can still arrange that.
Okay, so we'll carry case P 2024-0208, a preliminary and final major site plan for 158 Van Wagon and Ave. Uh, we'll carry that to a date certain, May 6th with preservation of notice. Thank you, Council.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, I do have notices for, uh, this matter, uh, P 2024-180. That I'll give to Council for review. Chairman, I receive the affidavit publication proof of mailing with respect to the application before the board this evening. It does appear to be in order. We're going to mark it as a warrant for purposes of the record. Okay, uh, thank you. For the record, uh, I've just handed out what I would like to mark as A2. It's, uh, two pages. It's an aerial photograph of the, uh, project, uh, the property site. And, and a reduced copy of the subdivision plan that's before you tonight with highlights with regard to the small lot or lots that are the subject of, of this application. I, I think this, this just kind of helps you, um, you know, uh, understand that the subdivision better. This is very, very briefly, I, I, I know I gave half my presentation at the last meeting. This, the purpose of the subdivision before you tonight, uh, it is a major subdivision. The reason it's a major subdivision is because there have been prior subdivisions related to this property within the last five years. So it has to be a major. It can't be a minor, even though it's, it's, uh, rather insubstantial. And it's a reversal of a subdivision that was approved in 2021. And in the 2021 subdivision, what we did is we, we carved out a piece of property from the access road to the North Pier Residential Development. And we made that part of the North Pier Development. Uh, so that property owner, uh, we'll call it EQR, Equity Residential, now became the owner of this little parcel. But in the meantime, uh, there are some encumbrances and, and requirements, uh, of ownership as part of this parcel with regard to the waterfront walkway and some environmental conditions. And the long and short of it is, uh, Equity Residential said, we don't want to do that. We don't want to be responsible for that. So Veris, uh, is, is the property owner, said, take it back. So essentially what we're doing is we're, we're taking that parcel back because even though the, the subdivision was perfected, we're going to carve this back. Uh, they never accepted ownership of the, of the parcel. And we're going to take it back and, and, uh, and, uh, then record this. And now everything's, you know, back at square one where my client owns the property again. And then we'll be responsible for all those conditions. And that's, that's it. Uh, I have, uh, Mr. Tom Golden here on behalf of the applicant in the event you have any questions, but there's, there's nothing more than that. Council, from a legal standpoint, how are we going to perfect that? We're going to. We're going to do it by map and then most likely by deed, uh, to clean it up. Uh, we have to do it by map because it's a major subdivision. And then we'll follow up with a deed to, to, um, move it back into ownership of Veris Residential. And then we'll follow up with a deed to move it back into ownership of Veris Residential.
Yes, Chairman. Anybody? Any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Is there anybody here from public that wants to comment? Anyone from public?
Chair, seeing no public, I move to close.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Public is closed. Eric, anything you want to add?
Yeah, staff agrees with the testimony provided by Mr. Chuck Harrington. It's a pretty straightforward application. Staff just request that the applicant agree to the conditions enumerated in the staff memo dated April 3rd, 2025.
Yes, we would.
And with that, staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve case P2024-0180 as presented to the board here tonight.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Prince Ari.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadon.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll call case P2023-0017 as a preliminary and final major site plan with variances for 650 Grove Street. Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, commissioners, staff, and counsel. My name is Jim McCann from the Law Firm of Connell Foley in Jersey City. I'm here on P2023-0017. This property is located at Block 6101, Lot 2. It's commonly known as 650 Grove. It's in the Jersey Avenue Light Rail Redevelopment Plan area, the high-rise district. It's owned by Grove Street Partners LLC. This is an application for a preliminary and final site plan approval. That's the relief requested. And counsel, this is a notice case. I do have my affidavit of service and publication to tender to you.
Thank you, counsel.
Counsel, you have a copy of our agenda tonight?
Yes, I do.
This is case P2023-0017. It's improperly identified as 650 Grove LLC on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
This was a carry from the March 11th meeting with preservation of notice.
13650 Grove LLC is the applicant. 14 is Grove Street Partners LLC is the applicant. I just want to make sure it's our error.
Oh, so counsel, I'm not sure if I have a current agenda, but 650 Grove is item 13 on the agenda, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
But the applicant you said was Grove Street Partners LLC, correct?
Yes.
Okay. They got 659.
Yeah, there's one or two typos in the agenda.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I see what you're saying now. Yes, that's not correct.
Okay. Chairman, I receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application at 650 Grove Street. It does appear to be in order. I've marked it as A1 for purposes of the record.
Thank you, counsel.
So, just a quick summary of the project. The property is currently vacant land. The proposal tonight is a new five-story building with 108 market rate residential units, approximately 3,752 square feet of retail in two different locations in the building. There are 57 parking spaces, which that's another typo that's in the agenda. And the performative green roof being proposed tonight is 14,928 square feet, which is much larger than the one listed in the agenda. The parking spaces also include ADA spaces and EV spaces. The architect will give you the exact numbers for that. This project complies with the redevelopment plan. There are no deviations requested or required. It is a project that's seeking a density bonus under the density bonus provisions of the Jersey City Light, Jersey Light Rail Redevelopment Plan. The density bonus basically allows the project to have 30 additional units per acre from the standard in the redevelopment plan if the developer does the following: signs a redevelopment agreement with the JCRA and becomes a designated redeveloper, which this developer has done both of those things. They have signed a redevelopment agreement with the JCRA dated September 5th, 2024. They have also agreed in that redevelopment agreement to make a contribution to an open space fund to be used in this redevelopment plan area. The amount of the contribution is set forth in the redevelopment agreement. It's to be paid upon the earlier of receipt of construction permits or the end of December 2026. There's also a lot coverage bonus being requested. Because of the size of the green roof, the project is allowed to have a lot coverage bonus of, the standard is 75%. The project is seeking 87%, 85.7%. It's based upon the size of the performative green roof. You get an extra 1% for every 300 square feet of performative green roof. Project actually qualifies for 125% lot coverage, but the request is 85.7. There's one variance required. It's for an ATS box, which is required by PSE&amp;G for this project and for other projects in the neighborhood. My project engineer will give you a little bit more detail on that. But the boxes itself is permitted, but it's not permitted to be located in the front yard. This one has to be because of PSE&amp;G requirements. We'll tell you more about that in a few minutes. There's also a request for a forestry standard waiver for tree pits. And we also have a slight deficiency in the number of trees that we're planting because of utilities and telephone poles, et cetera. So the project is prepared to pay for the seven-tree deficiency. They're going to pay the City of Jersey City the monetary contribution for the seven trees. And the landscape architect will tell you more, a little more about that. I have, my first witness is Eric Ballou from Insight Engineering. He's the civil engineer for the project. So if there are no questions about my summary, I'll just bring him right up.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Counsel, the affidavit of services A1, correct?
Yes.
So we're going to make a slide presentation?
Almost everything in the presentation are plans that have been filed with the board. They may be colorized to make the presentation easier. But whatever you see right now would be my A2, that I propose for A2 for identification.
Do we know how many slides?
Yes, we do. So, so let's do it this way. We have civil slides. We'll call those A2. The architectural slides, we'll make A3 because they're separately set up.
Very good. And there's, how many civil slides?
I'm planning on using two civil slides. And one of which will actually be a landscape. I'll explain it when I get to it.
All right.
Yes. I do. Eric Ballou, E-R-I-C, last name Ballou, B-A-L-L-O-U.
Mr. Ballou, good evening. Your license is current?
And my license is current and in good standing.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Excellent. Eric, your firm is the civil engineer for this project?
We are.
And your firm prepared the civil plans that are before the board tonight?
That is correct.
You planned, prepared them based upon your analysis of the redevelopment plan that's applicable to the property as well as the Jersey City zoning ordinance?
I did.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, so exhibit A2. The first exhibit is an aerial photo showing the existing conditions of the property. You can see the property is outlined in yellow with 18th Street, Border Guard Site to the north, and then Maron Boulevard to the east, Grove Street to the west. And then there's an existing private driveway at the rear portion of our property. The property is approximately 0.9 acres. It's almost an acre in size. So... Okay. So this exhibit, I guess as sort of the same civil presentation, is a colored rendering of landscape sheet L1. So this is a rendered landscape plan of the ground level of the project. So for the project as that, you can see that the building is basically covering a majority of the site. We have the lobby area is located off of the intersection of 18th and Grove. Then we have retail that's along 18th Street. Also along 18th Street is a, the entrance into the internal parking is really in the center of the building on 18th Street. Then we also have another retail portion along Maron Boulevard to give an orientation of this. What we're doing on Grove Street, we are proposing a striped loading area that will allow drop-off, pickup, as well as also loading activities for the project. So that will be done on Grove Street. Also, as part of the project on Maron Boulevard, we're actually widening the street by approximately six feet. And that's to accommodate a new bike lane. So to be part of the compliance with the zoning, we've widened Maron by six feet. Regards to parking, within the zone, they have minimum and maximum requirements. Minimum parking required is 25 spaces. Maximum out allowed is 64 spaces. We're proposing 57 spaces to comply with the parking requirement. And within those internal parking spaces, we'll also have EV spaces that conform with the present state legislation for EV parking requirements. We are within a flood zone, so we do have to address the green area ratio, which is 0.25. We're exceeding that based upon numerous green infrastructure improvements that we're doing. So we have the GAR and we're exceeding that. This area is approximately elevation for the preliminary flood maps is what we need to go by. It's at elevation 11. So what we've done is that we've placed all of the residential uses, as well as the parking level, is at one foot above that at elevation 12. So they'll be in conformance with the New Jersey flood hazard requirements. So we have the retail on 18th Street as well as Maron Boulevard. Since the roadway is lower, we're proposing to keep those retails at the streetscape level, so they're easily accessible. So those will be dry flood-proof to address the flood regulations, which is very common. We raise the residential and keep the retail at the streetscape levels. Another improvement that we have is in regards to stormwater management. So we're achieving a reduction of the two-year storm of 50%. The 10-year is 75% of pre-development. And the 100-year is 80% of pre-development. And these are the state and Jersey City rules and regulations. How we're addressing that now, with the last few years we've had to address this, we're really addressing this with what's called green stormwater infrastructure. So we're addressing this with, as you heard, the large green roof. That's part of stormwater green infrastructure. We also have permeable pavement proposed as part of this project, another green infrastructure stormwater practice. And then we even have some small bio-retention basins as part of the stormwater management. So we're really addressing with three different green infrastructure to achieve the reductions that are required. Regards to utilities, you know, we have water, sewer, JCMUA approval, all standard utility connections that's within any project. The one thing that is unique to our project is electric service. So the good part is that we met with PSE&amp;G well in advance of preparing these and submitting these plans. So we were able to place the transformers internal to the building as normally done to address our transformer locations. But there's a piece of equipment, we call it abbreviated ATS, but it's really an automatic transfer switch. So the ATS switches are used to help with reliability and redundancy of the electrical distribution system. If one circuit was to go down, this switch would allow it to be connected to a different circuit to help maintain some reliability in the electrical distribution. ATS switches cannot be placed inside buildings, based upon our conversations with PSE&amp;G. They also have proximity requirements. They need to be able to be in line with other transformers that are being serviced. So this ATS switch is not only servicing this project as part of its electrical infrastructure, it's also serving the transformers as part of the 659 project as well. So the ATS switch has to be located, we have it here on 18th Street, and we show it sort of towards the corner of Maron Boulevard. So PSE&amp;G has evaluated the situation and determined this is the location that it needs to be at. The switches are very similar to transformers. They have that same PSE&amp;G green color, and they're almost the same size as a large transformers. The one thing that is a little bit unique with an ATS is that transformer, you just need to have access to the doors in the front of it. Where in ATS, you actually have to have access on three sides. There's doors on three sides of this, which means you need to have a minimum clearance of 10 feet on all sides to properly access the equipment. So that's what you can see in the picture. We have the white box representing the ATS. But then you can see the green area, and then approximately, I believe, probably 10 feet away, is that where we have the screening opportunities. We place them as close as we can and still be compliant. But based upon the proximity of this, we do need a variance for its location.
I have no further questions.
Mr. Ballou, does that ATS have to be raised up any higher?
No, it's basically set on a gravel pad similar to a transformer. And they're approximately six feet high. So it's not elevated above, it's at the grade level is where it's placed. It's not like placed at 10-foot and up from there. It's at grade level is where it starts and placed.
Okay, but at flood level, it has to be, what, a foot above the 11? It has to be at 12, right?
This equipment actually is, I guess it's waterproof, so it's actually not above the flood elevations. It's within the flood elevations based upon its design.
Okay, gotcha. Interesting.
The equipment itself, like a transformer, will be, public service says it's okay if it's in flooded area?
Correct. This is specific to their designs, their where is flooding. And they say all our stuff is waterproof because it's electrical, is what they tell us.
And somebody physically has to flip a switch, or it's automated somehow?
See, I think it's automated, but I believe there's certain situations where maybe maintenance potential, or if something needs to be adjusted, that's why they have access to three sides of the structure. But it's supposed to be automated per its definition.
Okay.
All right, I did do a little research on it.
Go.
And it is automated. It automatically, in the event of a flood or some other kind of event where there's a power failure, it automatically switches the power to another circuit so that the properties in the vicinity can maintain electric power.
Look at you.
Can you believe it?
No, I appreciate that. Okay, anybody else? Anything? All right, thank you, Mr. Ballou. Appreciate it.
Okay, my next witnesses are the project architects. Two gentlemen from Thriving Design. So I'd like to bring them up now.
There we go. Thank you.
Sure. My name is Matthew Bartner, last name is B A R T N E R.
My name is Dan Stoica, D A N S T O I C A.
So Mr. Bartner is the New Jersey licensed architect who prepared the plans with his colleague, Dan Stoica, who is also an architect. We're going to qualify Mr. Bartner, and then he's going to defer his presentation to Mr. Stoica, if that pleases the board.
Sorry, my mic wasn't on. Mr. Bartner, your license is current and in good standing in New Jersey tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. So you're qualified.
Okay, so Mr. Bartner, your firm prepared these architectural plans, correct, that are before the board tonight?
Yes, that is correct.
And you've done it after an analysis and review of the redevelopment plan that's applicable to the project?
Yes.
As well as the J C L D O?
Yes.
And you've worked on those, on these plans with your colleague, Mr. Dan Stoica?
Yes, for two-plus years.
Yes, and you're requesting that he assist you with the presentation and move forward with it?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, Dan, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Mr. Stoica, you're an architect, correct? You have an architectural degree, correct?
I do.
Okay. How many years' experience do you have in design and architecture?
Over 20.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Stoica.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So 650 Grove Street, we are proposing a five-story, approximately 65-foot-tall building at the intersection of Grove Street and Eighteenth Street on a site that, as we just learned, spans from Grove Street all the way to Maron Boulevard. So the building is 65 feet tall. It contains, as Mr. Ballou has told us, 108 units in a mix of 36 studios, 58 one-bedrooms, and 14 two-bedrooms, and 3,792 square feet of retail all along Eighteenth Street. The main entrance is elevated above the floodplain, approximately five feet, and we see it in the rendering here. It's, has a monumental stair and a ramp that leads us up to the lobby with large floor-to-ceiling glass covered by a canopy with the title of the building, which is for now 650 Grove Street. The building is predominantly brick and dark metal panel as mandated by the redevelopment plan. And at the very top floor, to highlight and to accentuate and punctuate the corner and the entry of the building, we have the structural element that completes the volume of the building, where we have a tenant's use amenity deck up here. We'll see that in plan, and we'll see that in the landscape drawings that will be presented. The building's corner, I mean, the building's entry is at the corner, and it's diagonally across from the 659 project that we're also proposing, we'll talk about next. And it's across the street from the Lackawanna Building across Grove Street. So we're proposing brick, and we'll move on to the elevations. We're proposing a predominantly brick material on the facade with metal panels and oversized gray metal, oversized windows that hearken and reflect what's going on at the Lackawanna Building across the street, and as is mentioned in the redevelopment plan. The building marches along, and it's periodically, the materials are interrupted by this metal panel in order to create vibrance in the facade and to give a sense of texture and a little bit of variation as we move along. We're proposing a variegated brick material, whoops, this is, I apologize. A variegated brick material, and the windows will be highlighted with cast stone sills and cast stone headers at the ground floor, glass, and the building will also have a gray granite base, a sort of water table that serves to sort of separate the brick material from the concrete of the street. The retail stores are along Eighteenth Street, as we learned from Mr. Ballou, and as well as at the corner of Maron Boulevard and Eighteenth Street. We'll take us to the more detailed elevations. We see here the sill and, rather, the header and sill and the granite base that we are proposing at the ground floor. A portion of the garage of the building towards Eighteenth Street is exposed to the street. So that, and it's also, but as we learned, it's elevated, it's about five feet above the pedestrian walkway, pedestrian sidewalk. But this, these will not be windows. These are going to be like the storefront windows, but it's a metal panel, it's a metal mesh, rather, in a dark metal frame with a louvered bottom panel that is 42 inches to prevent glare from cars as they are parking in the garage. The ground floor plan again, the same one we saw in the civil presentation, but in the lobby area here, we have certain programming. We have leasing coworking spaces. We have a mail room. Right beside it is the bike room, 54 bikes, which is the requirement to service the 108 units in our building. The first of the two retail spaces, as they come along Eighteenth Street, the garage entry point, there's a small utility room here. And then this, where the building steps away and sweeps along with the curvature of Eighteenth Street, we have our garage, and this is the location of the ATS we just reviewed. And the second of the two retail spaces. Beyond that, towards the corner of the driveway to the Lackawanna Building, the electrical vault and the electrical switchgear room. So the parking garage accommodates 57 parking stalls, three handicapped, nine charging stations, and about 15 compact stalls as well. We have other utility spaces at the ground floor are the water fire room and the trash room, and yeah. The second floor, excuse me, the second floor steps away from the base volume of the building, so we create a reduction in the volume up here, and that affords us the opportunity for private patios for units at both sides. So some along Eighteenth Street, others along the south elevation of the building. And also at the second floor, we have tenant amenities. We have a fitness room. We have another lounge. We have more coworking spaces, tenant storage, and generally speaking, spaces for the tenants to avail of the building. The, whoops. The typical floor plans, third and fourth, are only units and a small tenant storage room. And then the next floor plan, the next change in floor plan happens at the fifth floor, where we saw the carve-out of the exterior roof deck here with a clubroom for the tenants as well. So this faces across the street to 659, and the rest of this floor is also units. And then the roof, which will be occupied for a portion of it, immediately adjacent the elevators with various amenities. The landscape architects, our colleagues, will talk about that. And briefly speaking, there's going to be a dog run, there's going to be some drilling stations, and then this very large green roof, the performative green roof, and some mechanical equipment, equipment here, and then equipment again on top of the elevator bulkhead. And that is in, that is our proposal.
So we do have some material boards, if any of the members of the board would like to touch and feel some of the materials that are being used for the project.
So that's the size of the screening for the garage?
We are.
Okay, it's not a tighter square? Okay.
Concerned about a hand or something?
No, no, I'm concerned about just the level of screening that, you know, a wire gauge, it's not really the wire gauge, it's just the space in between the wire. You know, it doesn't provide that much screening. Matt, is that, okay, does that conflict with the redevelopment plan for screening?
So the applicant and planning staff worked together through several iterations of this project as maybe some discrepancies in the project description in the agenda reveal. And there was always, you know, it was represented to me that there was this ventilation need, and accommodating that ventilation need within the design standards of the plan that require, you know, these active uses, you know, minimizing, you know, not having like just straight-up vents was something we worked through. Additional retails added to the project at the corner of Maron as part of these discussions. And this screening as proposed felt, staff felt was preferable to sort of the strict ventilation type requirements, which would involve your typical open parking deck.
Okay.
And so this screening essentially straddles the gap between each proposed retail space and is also buffered by landscaping on both sides and street trees.
Okay. Yeah, it's just.
Not visible in the board is that we did not have an opportunity to finish the material, but it will also be painted the dark color that will match the windows and the metal panel on the project as well.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I didn't know if that created a variance in the redevelopment, you know, from the redevelopment plans, a screening like that.
No, the screening is explicitly required to screen any sort of automobile parking from the public facades of the building. And so this was part of marrying that design standard with, you know, anytime ventilation requirements when you're storing internal combustion engines inside and having them run.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
So Matt, it was hard for me to hear that, but just so I could be clear, the screening for the garage is at the rear of the building facing Eighteenth Street?
Yes.
Facing Eighteenth Street. You're saying that the, there's some type of landscape in front of that screening? Because I understand the combustion of air and stuff, but what happens with car lights that come on?
So in order to prevent the glare of the headlights, the windows, these window-like elements have a much more opaque louver at the very base of.
At the bottom of it.
That's right. So the screen is actually from 42 inches up, right? But the very bottom of it is 42 inches high, so that should be above any.
And the car lights would be protected from that.
That is specifically stipulated in the redevelopment plan, and we.
And that louver is not up there?
The louver is not up there.
That is not shown up there. That louver is not there. Right. That louver is not in that.
That's what I was concerned about, not just the air, but the light too that goes through. All right, thank you.
So you've got garage screen one and garage screen two on the board?
Yes.
Can you just show us on the elevation where one is and where two is?
There is a slight discrepancy on that board. I apologize for that. But garage screen one is the screen that faces Eighteenth Street. Garage screen two is the screen facing the ramp to the Lackawanna Building. That is also not shown here. That screen should be a little bit more open and less decorative because it's a rear elevation of the building, and it will not be seen to the pedestrian. The much denser screen that we show up there will play in when we present the 659 project, because there are portions of that project that warrant a tighter screen to limit visibility into, is otherwise a mechanical area.
I'm not sure if I missed that. The variance, the accessory structure in the front yard, do you have a slide with it?
A slide of the ATS box?
The accessory structure in the front yard.
Anywhere on a rendering?
That shows it on the plan. We don't have an illustration of the box with us because it's P S E N G mechanical, but that's where it appears.
So that's the location?
Yes, because it has to be on Eighteenth Street, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Per P S E N G standards. Oh, we have a photo of it. I could walk it around to you. We can mark it if you'd like. It's not very pretty, but.
It's a different color than the photo, right?
Do you want to mark it, Council? A four?
A four. Yeah, these plans will be A three. The plans that are, the architect is presenting will be A three.
Clearly. Does the D E P have that called out in their regulation?
So that's a question we would have to ask Mr. Ballou. That requirement came strictly from P S E N G. We actually sent a group of people out to meet with them because we know that you're not generally allowed in this, before this board, to place those kinds of things in front of your project on the street corner. So we did the best that we could to avoid it, but we were told, no, it's got to be there. You got to have it in this part of the neighborhood. We need that automatic, that box to automatically transfer the power in the event of a flood or some other catastrophe. So Eric, you attended the meeting with P S E N G, right?
I did not, but my colleague did and gave me very detail, as well as the architects attended as well.
We don't really want it there either, but we don't have a choice.
I don't know, Mr. Harrington had a contact at P S E N G that was very tight-lipped about that he got something moved, and it was up in Journal Square. It happened about four weeks ago. Tried to get a name out of him. He wasn't giving it up, but he was very happy about where he was able to move that off of.
And not to complicate things further, like not every portion of Jersey City needs these ATS switches. There's called the network distribution system, and then there's the radial spoke version. So we're in the radial version is why ATS switches are needed for this radial power distribution by P S E N G to add to that. So it's not everywhere in the city either that these are needed.
Oh, no, I don't have any further research.
That was bullet five on my list.
That was what we were told at the P S E N G meeting, yes.
And Mr. Ballou, did they mention anything about D E P in terms of whether or not, do you have to get approval out of D E P?
Well, I'll say this. It's actually going to be shown. We have to go for NJ D E P flood hazard. It's on there. But we've had, we've obtained numerous flood hazard permits for urban areas with these, and we've never, D E P's never had issues with them. Because I think it's because it's P S E N G, it's their infrastructure system.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so my next witness is a landscape architect. So Malillo and Bauer are the landscape architects for this project, and I have Gates Kielty here tonight, a landscape architect to testify about the plans.
I do. Yes, my name is Gates, G A T E S, Kielty, K I E L T Y.
Good evening. I don't believe we've ever qualified you.
That's correct.
Okay, if you could, just give us your background, your educational background and your licensing in the state.
Yes, absolutely. So I am a project manager at Malillo Bauer Carmen. I have been licensed in New Jersey since 2021. My license is in good standing. I graduated from the Penn State University in 2014 with a degree in landscape architecture. I have testified in front of the Asbury Park Board in the past, and I have been with Malillo Bauer Carmen for the last 10-plus years.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Great.
Gates, your firm is the landscape architect for the project, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And you've prepared the plans that are before the board tonight, the landscape architectural plans?
Yes.
And you've taken into considers, consideration the redevelopment plan for this project?
Yes, we have.
As well as the JCLDO, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to start at the street level here. We are showing a richly detailed landscape plan, including a hearty palette of both ornamental and native plant material along the streetscape and at the building entry. We have two types of permeable concrete pavers used along the majority of the streetscape and gray colored concrete at the driveways and ADA ramps. All of these will complement the architectural materials. We have a number of shade trees along the streets totaling 15 street trees. We are deficient in that due to a number of utility driveway and light clearance requirements by forestry standards. Additionally, we do deviate in the size of the tree pits along each of the streets where five by 10 would normally be required by forestry standards. I believe we have about a four by 10 sized tree pit. And we've been working with forestry engineering and engineering to come up with a solution so that we can provide an adequately sized sidewalk and tree pits based on their recommendations. Along 18th Street, there are also several bio retention areas, as noted by Eric earlier, that will help store and slow the release of storm water. The planting for these areas were selected from the NJDEP list of plants for bio retention areas within their BMP manual. Also, as noted by Eric, we are exceeding the GAR requirements. There are two bike racks along the streetscape, namely at the lobby entry. They will provide parking for four bikes at that area. In terms of lighting at the street, we conform to the city standard light fixtures and are, they are proposed along the curb line. We do meet the minimum 0.5 foot candles required. We also utilize a number of building mounted lights along the rear of the building and at key architectural moments like doorways and columns. Moving up to the second floor landscape plan, we have a number of private terraces along the northern and southern portions of the building. And we utilize intensive green roof planting at this level at the south side with plants hearty for the application. At the fifth floor, we have an exterior amenity space that comes off of the interior amenity space. And the amenities at this level include a gas fireplace with lounge seating, string lights and a dining table. Additionally, we have a number of intensive green roof plants at this level as well, hearty for the application. And then finally, at the upper roof, we have additional green roof, both intensive and extensive, and a number of amenities at this level that include a synthetic lawn with a movie wall, a dog run, which is approximately 950 square feet, fire pits, a grill station and bar, with bar counter seating, shade structures, game tables and artistic lighting. And this is a composite of all of the levels here. So the project's green roof totals are 11,935 square feet of extensive green roof and 2,993 square feet of intensive green roof totaling the 14,928 square feet of planting for the total site.
So Gates, just real quick, so the tree pits, basically your office communicated with the foresters in Jersey City and, and the issue was, do you want us to comply with the tree pit dimension size or maintain the full width of the sidewalk that's required? And the forestry department said, you can reduce the size of the tree pits because we prefer the sidewalk to comply with the redevelopment plan, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Reduce the size of the, the tree that's going to be planted on that pit?
No, it wouldn't.
Okay, so it'll still be the same?
Okay, anybody else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
My last witness is Ms. Carol, Carolyn Wurstel from Judenrobin Planner.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening again.
Good evening. And Ms. Wurstel, if you could just say for the record that you understand that you have been sworn in already and are still under oath?
Yes, I understand that I have been sworn in already and I am still under oath.
And you are still qualified as well?
Yes, and my license is still in good standing.
Thank you.
So yes, you've heard about the project. We're here for a single variance. There are no deviations from the redevelopment plan. We are seeking a variance from the LDO related to that accessory structure, which is the ATS switch. That, that's what the structure is, is the switching equipment plus the, the cover. Under section 34560, which is the supplementary standard section, talks about accessory structures. And within that, it prohibits accessory structures from being in a front yard. We are required by PSENG to provide this equipment. It services not just this building, but other places, other buildings along the block. As you heard the testimony, we really don't have a lot of, we can't move it. This is, the location has been told that we have to provide it. And we're sort of in a situation where we have a cap lot, we have three frontages. So we really are very limited in terms of what isn't a front yard for this application. So we're really sort of looking at this, this is a hardship. We're required to provide the equipment. The only place we can provide it is in a front yard. And really the, the, we're, we're trying to provide as much buffer as we can for this. We are trying to provide it within a green area. We are trying to provide what landscaping buffer and, and screening we are permitted to provide. As you heard, we, we do have to have certain minimum distances from landscaping in order to meet the requirements by PSENG for access. So we are trying to, to mitigate that location as best as we can. But this is, this is location that we have been told that it has to be provided. I think we also, built and suspenders, want to just discuss that waiver for the tree pits?
Sure, yes, please.
Basically, the, the redevelopment plan says that street trees will be regulated pursuant to the New Jer, the Jersey City Forestry Standards. The Jersey City Forestry Standards has, their standard tree pit is five by 10, but it does allow that alternative dimensions are permitted upon consultation and approval by the forester. We are in the process and have reached out to the forester and, and are still in the process of finalizing those, those tree pits, but we will get that approval by the forester for the reduced tree pits. So, you know, we, we believe that, you know, the waiver can be granted and that we are, we're working within what the Jersey City Forestry Standards processes. I think, you know, overall, this project advances the municipal land use law. It's consistent with purpose A. The proposed use of, mixed use of, you know, ground floor retail and residential uses is permitted and envisioned on this site by the redevelopment plan. Existent with purpose E, establishment of appropriate population density is, that's a permitted number of units. And consistent with purpose I, you know, desirable visual environment. Again, the, the building has been designed to add landscaping between the building and the sidewalk where we can. We have the, you know, new street trees, we'll have new sidewalks, you know, trying to add those, I'm blinking on the term, the bioswales is where, where we can as well. So I think overall the, the, the design here is very appropriate. It's consistent with the redevelopment plan. It won't result in a substantial detriment to the public good or general welfare. Again, it's consistent with the redevelopment plan, providing all of the setbacks as required to allow for our light air and open space. And then the new commercial uses will provide new retail spaces along both 18th Street and Marin Boulevard. And granting the deviation or the variance will likewise not result in a substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone planner zoning ordinance. It's promoting the purpose of that high-rise district that it's located in, which is to encourage and reinforce street wall design and develop active ground floor uses. It's also advancing several of the redevelopment plan objectives. Objective H, provision of land and parcels of sufficient size and configuration so as to permit economic redevelopment. Objective I, provision of site improvements for the beautification of the plan and surrounding neighborhoods. And objective M, creation of new major employment and housing opportunities for residents of Jersey City. So I think, you know, overall, this project meets both positive and negative criteria for the variance required for that front yard accessory structure.
And Carolyn, just real quick, two last things. So you can confirm for us that the 14,928 square foot performative green roof justifies the lot coverage bonus of 85.7%, correct?
Right, um, let's see.
Actually justifies 125% lot coverage.
Right, so the, the lot coverage, I think it's section 4E, lot coverage bonuses. It says for parcels greater than 2,000 square feet, you can increase your coverage by a factor of 1% for every 300 square feet of performative green roof. Green infrastructure, rain garden onsite, I mean, we're providing a lot of those items. But base coverage was 75%. We are providing that 14,928 square feet, which equates to a 49% housing bonus or a bonus of coverage, which would have gotten us to 125%. Can't cover more than 100%. And we're only proposing 85.3%. So we're definitely more than comfortable with that bonus.
And we have also qualified for the density bonus because we have executed a redevelopment agreement and agreed to make a monetary contribution of one, almost one point, around 1.9 million dollars to the open space fund, correct?
Yeah, that's consistent with bonus A.
Thank you.
Anything else, Council?
That completes our presentation.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Wurstel? Anyone? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment, please come on up. Anyone from public?
Mr. Chair, seeing the public, I move to close.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Matt, you have anything you want to add?
Planning staff substantiates the accuracy of Ms. Wurstel's testimony and is satisfied the bonus conditions are met. As far as the ATS variance goes, it has to go somewhere. And there's three, there's three front yards here and then one yard that's right up against the Lackawanna Center industrial facility. And so I think, you know, it's pretty apparent that, you know, they meet the required proofs here and the negative criteria is mitigated by their, you know, placing it within the landscaping and not having it foul the public right of way or be the prominent focus of this long facade along 18th Street, which has retail frontage on both corners, which is envisioned, which is in line with the objectives of the Jersey Avenue Light Rail redevelopment plan, which is going to see this neighborhood transformed into a mixed use commercial, residential, transitorian and development, hopefully with an infill light rail station one day. That's all.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve-
Could I, could I just say two things?
Go ahead, Council.
I do have actually one thing.
Sure. I thought so.
Yes, so staff prepared a memo dated April 4th, 2025. Within that memo, there are six proposed conditions. Staff is proposing to strike condition six. Prior to receiving a set of occupancy, the property shall be inspected and receive sign off from the Office of Historic Preservation. That was a scribbler's error related to a condition intended for another application, making it into the document. And so the staff is proposing the first five conditions within the memo.
So thank you, Matt, for doing that. And yes, we, we agree to comply with the first five conditions. I also should probably say that we received a JCMU a comment letter of August 14th, 2024. We had, the projects, the civil engineers, Mr. Balu's group has either already complied with it on the plans or they will address any remaining comments. The last thing is traffic engineering submitted a final report or comment letter dated August 15th, 2024. They wanted raised bike lanes in front of this project on 18th Street. Eric has done a ton of work with the DEP and with the MUA and the raised bike lanes would create a drainage problem in front of this project, a flooding problem, basically, the potential for it. So Gary Dean's office has been working with the traffic engineering department and what they've agreed is to take the raised bike lanes off the table. We will work with the Division of Traffic Engineering to come to a solution to provide a safe and passable bike lane in front of the project and around the project on 18th Street, probably with, with barriers that are either more aesthetically pleasing than the ones that are out there right now or some other type of barrier, but we do not have to raise the bike lanes.
Okay, understood, thank you, Council.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve case P2023-0017 as presented to our board tonight.
All right, motion made and seconded for approval.
Commissioner Torres. Commissioner Councilwoman Prince Ari.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you for your time, Commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, so Council, you are up next, but before we do that, we do have a 9:30 hard cutoff here. We lose our security at the front, so we do need to lock the doors. Once we lose that security and we cannot hold a public meeting at that point with the doors locked. So we do not take any testimony after 9:30. If there's anybody passed, and I assume, Council, you need more than 20 minutes?
Chairman, I'm sorry, I, I actually, I thought you were informed. So we've been told that we can go to 10 now. However, I'm going to confirm and then I'll have to come back and reconfirm, but-
Will it's security here until 10 or are they here until after 10?
They would stay here till 10:30 so that we can all leave, but we, we get an extra half an hour. But let me, let me confirm, sorry about-
Okay, do you want to confirm?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right back.
So in the meantime, Mike, does that change your break? Okay. Yeah, let's take a quick five minute break and we'll-
All right, I suppose. Karaoke, Bryce.
I can't park my truck down there.
I'm singing.
Do we have everybody that we need to? Because we, I'll wait for Council. It's not bad for me, it's not bad for us. So we do have confirmation that it is a 9:30 cutoff tonight. Apologize. So if anybody wants to carry, Mr. Joseph, I assume. I don't think Mr. McCann's going to step out of the way for you tonight.
All right, so I have cases 15, that's P2024-0173, 359 Johnson Avenue. I also have, it's also listed as 15, I think it's just a typo though, case P2024-0207, 89 Neptune Avenue. I have case 16, P2024-0227, 209 Halliday Street. And I have- Number 22, P2024-0165, 221 to 223 New- two three, Nunda Avenue.
Cam?
Yeah, we'll do May sixth. We're going to have to push items that didn't notice for that meeting and accommodate items being carried.
I'll, uh, let's carry preservation to May sixth, but Cam, I'll connect with you this week and we'll figure out what we're doing about the twenty-second and about the sixth. But I, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
All right, thank you, counsel.
It's been a pleasure this evening.
Sorry, thanks.
I feel like something big is on May sixth.
Hi, good evening, Linda Hurlehe with Riker Danzig. I have number seventeen, it's P two oh two four zero one nine nine.
Cam?
Um, May sixth.
May sixth?
With preservation of notice?
Of course, yes, with preservation of notice. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you very much.
She's got to sign the application.
Okay, counsel, do you want to carry your last item before we continue?
Yes, I'll carry my item. Three oh one West Side, case, uh, item eighteen on the agenda. Carry with preservation of notice.
Cam?
May, May sixth.
All right.
Yeah. It'll be a post Cinco de Mayo celebration.
Okay.
Cam, did we have something big on May sixth?
We did.
We do have an item carried. I, I can't remember what. Okay.
Uh, the Pet Boy site.
Yeah, that's on May sixth, correct?
Oh, I was thinking of April twenty-second.
Okay, so let's move on with case P two zero two three dash zero zero one eight, Site Plan Amendment for six fifty-nine Grove Street. Counsel?
Hi, James McCann from the Loughroom of Connell Foley on behalf of the applicant Grove Street Partners LLC. This is another project that's in the Jersey Avenue Light Rail Redevelopment Plan, the high-rise district, commonly known as six oh, six fifty-nine Grove Street, block six zero zero two, Lot Eight. This is a notice case. Counsel, I'm going to tender my affidavit of service and publication for marking as A one.
Sure. That's okay. We'll leave it for him.
So this project was approved initially in two thousand and seventeen. It received the preliminary site plan approval at that time. It received the final site plan approval in two thousand and twenty-one. Both of those approvals were from the predecessor entitled. My client purchased the project and is basically amend, is requesting that the site plan approval be amended, so the relief requested is an amended preliminary and final site plan approval. But basically, this is a refinement of the existing project. And just to run you through a few things very quickly, it was approved as a ten-story building, that is not changing. It was approved at one hundred and thirty-nine residential units, that is not changing. The retail square footage, square, square footage is changing from eleven thousand and fifty square feet to an increase to fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty-three square feet. Parking garage initially approved at a hundred and two parking spaces, decreasing to ninety-nine spaces, which still complies with the redevelopment plan. And this project was approved with a density bonus in two thousand and seventeen. Again, the standard is ninety dwelling units per acre. With the density bonus provision, it's a hundred and twenty acre, units per dwelling units per acre. That was previously approved, that is not changing at all. Basically, there's one new waiver, there's a tree pit waiver, very similar to the project that we just talked about, that was just approved. Having said that, I'm just going to bring Mr. Ballou up, who's also the project engineer on this project, and he will quickly run through you, run you through a few changes to the project.
Okay, thank you.
And counsel, for purpose of the record, I'm going to receive the affidavit of publication, proof of mailing with respect to six fifty-nine Grove. It does appear to be in order, A one for purposes of record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And for the record, Mr. Ballou has been sworn in already tonight, he is still under oath and is still qualified.
I acknowledge that, thank you.
Thank you.
So I believe we have Exhibit A two on the board right now?
Yes, let's call that A two, counsel.
And this is a rendered sheet, landscape sheet L one. So I'm going to go through the, the plan changes. You know, one, there were some minor changes to the footprint and some modifications as explained before, just accommodations. In regards to parking, what we're minimum required is eighty-five, maximum allowed is one sixty-two, and we're at ninety-nine spaces, so we're still fully compliant with parking. As with the other projects, we had to add green infrastructure stormwater management. So for this project, we also have green roof and permeable pavers to meet the DEP and Jersey City runoff rate reductions. So there's some changes to the stormwater management system. That will get approved by both JCMU and the State of New Jersey. There's no ATS switches, we have our transformer inside, but this project would be serviced by that ATS switch that was just approved. So this is one of the buildings that, that benefits from that use. There are some small grading changes along the back, there's a small retaining wall along the back of the property necessary for grading changes, so that was something that was added as part of this. We will also have EV spaces in accordance to state requirements, I'm not sure if that was on the original approval. So from a site perspective, those were the, the changes that occurred.
Thank you, Mr. Ballou.
Any questions, anyone?
Yes, well, what was the, um, the original approval, what was the parking spaces?
A hundred and two spaces.
It was a hundred and two?
So it was a three-space reduction that--
Just a three-space reduction. I thought you said, uh, two hundred and so, I was like, why such a major reduction?
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Next witness is the project architect, Thriven Design.
And--
Would like the board to recognize the same process, Mr. Bartel on, at Thriven Design, the New Jersey licensed architect, has prepared the plans and is, everything being done tonight is under his license, and we'd like to have Mr. Stoichak do the presentation.
Okay, um, Bartel, I thought it was Bartner. Okay, thank you, just checking my notes here, that's okay. Okay, so just for the record, you understand that you have been sworn in, qualified, are still under oath, and you as well, sir?
Yes, I acknowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, we're going to mark the architectural drawings as A three?
Yes, please.
And just tell me how many, please.
Again, bear with me. Please. We will have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Thank you.
So six fifty-nine Grove Street, diagonally across the street from six fifty Grove, which we just saw. The two buildings were, were designed and to complement and engage in a dialogue with each other, so our entry, as in the previous approval, sits on the corner of Eighteenth Street and, and Grove Street, just across the street from, from six fifty. And the lobbies really reflect each other and are engaging in this, in a, in a dialogue of, of a relationship between the pedestrian traffic there. So we really anticipate this intersection to be a, a really great place in, in, between these two streets. The building is ten stories, as, as previous, and as the previous design, the building steps back at the fourth floor level, above the parking garage, and creates, so the base of the building creates a sort of a pediment, and then we have this tower element that goes up for the full height of the building. And at the top floor, at the tenth floor, as at the six fifty project, we have this carve-out tenant amenity space here that has a structural element that completes the volume, and the two buildings really reflect each other. This space here is going to obviously have a much nicer view, it faces southeast, so the Jersey City skyline, the Manhattan skyline are all right there. The material palette is the same as at six fifty, so we have the predominant brick, the very large windows. The Lackawanna Building is across the street from here, across Eighteenth Street, so the similar color palette and the materiality that is mandated by the redevelopment plan. The brick is interrupted every so often by a metal panel to create a variation in the facade. And we have obviously the fourth floor step back here, which creates a, a roof, which we're, are going to be the outdoor amenity areas for the project. There's also at the fourth floor, an indoor amenity area for the tenants, and we see this large glass glazed element here that separates the tower portion of the building from, from the base portion, from the lower portion of the building. As we march along Eighteenth Street, we have our storefronts. They're in the same location, more or less, as they were before, just that we have slightly more storefront and, because of the, of the increase in area. And here towards the rear of the building, towards the west side of the building, where the plaza will be for the, hopefully the right lit, the right light rail station in the near future. One difference is that this wall was previously curved and now it's zigzagged and stepped back, it creates a landscaping opportunity at the front of the building, and we thought that would be very beneficial. The enlarged elevations, we see the same as before, so monumental lobby area with monumental stairs and a ramp that leads up to it, building mountain lighting, floor-to-ceiling glass at the lobby that reflects what's going on across the street at six fifty, and a, and a large canopy that covers all this, again reflective of what we have across the street. So the variegated brick, the dark metal panel at the top of the building, we, in the longer portion of, of the building, we interrupt the, the brick and we have a metal panel top floor, which serves, once again, to articulate the building well and to create more visual interest as we, as we go along. I'll walk you through the plans, the ground floor plan. Main entry, lobby, mail area, leasing and co-working spaces in this area, our back-of-house spaces are along Grove, but away from the intersection, so generator room, electrical room, electrical vault, trash, and an electric switchgear, gas room. There is a, a bike room in the garage at the first tier, we only have, I believe, is six parking stalls, yep. And EV parking as well, and bike storage for tenants for a hundred and thirty-nine bicycles. And then towards the west, along Eighteenth Street, we have the, we said fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty-three square feet of, of retail and the pedestrian plaza towards the end. Second floor is the first residential floor and a parking tier. So the residential units are towards the east and the south of the building over here, so directly above the lobby, facing the six fifty Grove project, and the parking tier is towards the west. And the building steps back slightly over the, a portion of the retail roof. At the, excuse me. Here, which way, this, no. At the third floor, again, seven residential units, this is directly above the second, and the third and last parking tier, this one is slightly fewer parking stalls than that, than the, the one below, and a large storage room directly below the pool area, where we have the pool mechanical room, storage and maintenance. And to the question that came up earlier, this portion of the facade here, the mesh is going to be the denser mesh, that's going to be a little bit more obscure for lights and stuff that are going to be in here, so that pedestrians won't, will have less visual cue in here. Our parking tiers are naturally ventilated at the upper floor, so the larger, the larger mesh is intended for here, so that we can achieve natural ventilation through the garage and obviate the need for mechanical ventilation up here. The-- Let me go back one, please. The fourth floor, the building steps back yet again, so this, this is the beginning of our tower portion of the building. So two amenity decks here, two amenity decks for tenants, used gen, uh, one facing south in the Lackawanna Building, one facing west towards the Palisades, this is the one that has the pool, and a large amenity area for tenant use, fitness, kids' room, and other lounges for the tenants. Because the building steps back here, this also affords the opportunity along the whole perimeter of the building virtually, except for above the entry, for private patios for, for the units. And then the typical floors, sixth, fifth, sixth, and, and up to the ninth floor, they're all typical, one hundred percent units, and some, you know, trash, trash chute room, electrical meter room, and other utility closets along the way. And, whoops. At the ninth floor, almost largely residential, but as at six fifty, we have a private clubroom and that sky deck that we, we saw in the renderings, facing southeast. And then the roof, where there is a rooftop mechanical room and a large portion of performative green roof, which is necessary for, for stormwater management, and the elevator machine room above that. And I'll leave you with the last rendering, the building, we've kept the columns away from the corner, so we can have these large windows that articulate each of the corners along the, the facade. And as I said, the geometry of the siding is as before. Questions?
Thank you, any questions, anybody? Eddie? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next witness is Malillo and Bauer Landscape Architects.
Counsel, we have four minutes left, do you think we can make this happen? And I have to do a hard nine-thirty.
Uh, yeah, yes, I think we can, could you--
Do you have planning testimony as, as well?
I don't, because I don't have any deviations or variance.
Perfect. Good evening again, and if you could just--
Just-- Ground floor.
You've been, you've been qualified, sworn in, and are still under oath.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so our plans essentially were revised to respond to the DEP requirement changes. So similar to six fifty, we utilize the same hardscape treatment along the street level. We have a total of eighteen street trees at this level and a number of additional trees within the plaza to the west, that I'll expand upon a little bit more in a bit. We have six bike racks along the streetscape and provide parking for twelve bikes near the lobby entry and at the plaza space. The plaza space to the west was designed to respond to plans for the light rail that will ultimately be constructed to the north of the site. We have movable planters proposed to delineate the spaces. Which can easily be moved to provide opportunity for pedestrian and public pass-through to the future light rail. Within the plaza, there is also an eight hundred square foot dog run space for residents of the building, which is proposed with a synthetic turf material specifically manufactured for the application. And also similarly to the six fifty-nine, or sorry, six fifty proposal, we do deviate from the standard tree pit sizes with this project as well.
But you've also communicated on this project with--
With forestry.
Forestry, and they have again said, make the dimensions a little smaller and maintain the sidewalk width, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And that's what we're doing?
Yes, correct.
Under their supervision?
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That's, uh-- That's our, completes our testimony and our presentation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Anybody on landscaping? Okay.
Counsel, we got to mark this as A four for the record.
Yes, please, thank you, counsel.
Okay, is anybody here from public that wants to comment on this application?
Seeing no public, I move to close. I move to close.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Matt, I need to wrap you up.
Yeah, super quick. So staff published a memo dated four four, twenty twenty-five, noted this is an as-of-right application still with the amendments. Seven conditions are listed, of which staff is recommending Condition Six be struck, similar to the previous application, it was a scribbler's error for an adaptive reuse project on a, on an application template. So staff is, supports approval with those six conditions.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this--
Just, got to just say one thing real quick, so regarding those conditions, one of Matt's conditions is that we comply with conditions from the final site plan that was originally granted, which I agree to, with one caveat, there's the require, there's a condition in that, in that approval that the developer pay the monetary contribution. I just want to enter, enter this into the record, this is payment of the monetary-- I just want to enter, enter this into the record, this is payment of the monetary contribution. It's already been paid. It was delivered to Joey Ann Morales, Coordinator of Monitoring Evaluation, dated, it's a letter dated April 22nd, 2022, and I would tender it to you, Counsel, as the next exhibit as proof that the monetary contribution's already been paid. Other than that, we agree to all Matt's conditions.
So that's proof that the condition has been satisfied?
Yes.
If the condition remains, we can mark it as satisfied if.
Yes.
Okay. We'll mark that as A5 for that purpose, Counsel.
We have the same commitment from Traffic Engineering on the bike lanes, they also wanted raised bike lanes here. We have the same commitment that we will work with them to provide bike lanes, but they will not have to be raised bike lanes.
Okay, thank you, Counsel.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve Case P 2023-0018 as presented to our board tonight.
Motion made and seconded for approval.
Commissioner Torres. Commissioner, Councilwoman Prince Arie.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
All right, thank you. So let's move on to memorialization of resolutions.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Counsel.
The following resolutions, I have four. Resolution number one of the City of Jersey City is extending preliminary major site plan approval for one year. P 2025-0026 submitted by Newport Associates Development Company at 108 Sixth Street, Block 7302, Lot 55 dot 01, and 16-60 Sixth Street, Block 7302, Lot 55 dot 02, formerly known as 2 Sixth Street, Block 7302, lots 43 and 55. Second resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, Amendments to the zoning map regarding rezoning lots on Palisade Avenue from R2 to RC2, Case Number P 2025-0041. Third resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City for approval and recommendation of amendments to Chapter 345-31 of the Land Development Ordinance regarding the General Development Checklist Case, and this is P 2025-0042. The fourth and final resolution is corrective resolution, a resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, Applicant 285 Newark Avenue LLC for a final major site plan amendment and approval at 285 Newark Avenue, Block 11004, Lot 6, Jersey City, New Jersey, Case Number P 2024-0119.
Okay, do I have a second? All right, motion and second, Cam?
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin. Councilwoman Prince Arie. Commissioner Torres. Chairman Langston. Motion carries all in favor to memorialize resolutions.
Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you, guys. We're adjourned.